Calling to order the Monday, September 16th, 2024, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunan.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. I'm going to take the time this evening during the mayor's led moment of reflection to address our community about concerns about a firearms retailer's plans to open in downtown Berkeley. First, I'd like to provide an update on these plans. The business owner has recently withdrawn their application, which means these plans will not be moving forward at this time. I understand that this business owner's original plans caused worry and surprise in our community, especially given the proposed location's proximity to our high school facilities. I appreciate these concerns and want you to know that we take them very seriously. In response to community feedback on this matter, our city staff plans to recommend that the planning commission consider new restrictions for firearms retailers. The proposal would limit these businesses to the Woodward and 11 Mile retail districts with a 1,000-foot buffer from schools and from each other. This change, if approved by the planning commission and then the city council, would limit locations where firearms retailers could be located, giving us more local control over such decisions in the future. It's important to note that under current zoning ordinances, a firearms retailer is classified as a general use, and general retail uses are permitted in downtown Berkeley. This means that if such a business meets all safety, legal, and zoning requirements, city staff, the planning commission, and the city council cannot deny the application. We're bound by state and federal laws in these matters. We recognize our community's needs and desires have evolved since our ordinances were last updated in 1993. That's why we've been proactively working with our community since spring 2023 on a comprehensive rewrite of our zoning ordinances. The goal of this update is to address various uses that weren't anticipated in our current regulations. I see you, Berkeley. I hear you. I want to thank each of you who reached out to share your thoughts on this matter. We got your emails. I've read them all. I know that my colleagues at this table have read them as well. Your commitment, your voice makes our community stronger, and we truly value your input. We're committed to working together to ensure Berkeley remains a safe and welcoming place for everyone. As we move forward with updating our ordinances, we'll continue to keep you informed, and we welcome your ongoing participation in this process. You may visit berkeleymich.org/ zones for information about the zoning ordinance rewrite. I want to thank everyone who's here tonight who cares, because we do care in Berkeley. There will be, if you subscribe to the city newsletter, you'll find out about a lot of things, but specifically to this topic, when the public engagement session is. All of those things will happen before it comes before us to make any final determination. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. Onto my next topic. I know there are people here regarding Berkeley Days, and you're interested in hearing what exactly is on this agenda, and I want to be abundantly clear, no decisions are being made this evening regarding Berkeley Days. We're going to have robust discussion. We're going to perhaps reimagine Berkeley Days. We, as a council, will discuss so that we're able to give staff direction about a possible resolution and where that would go. So again, no decisions are being made this evening. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. Please direct your comments to the chair. I would ask you to refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or council, there's a table right outside the store where you may leave your contact information, your name, and somebody will get back with you. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart, and if you would, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Dean, city council members, and Berkeley residents. Most of you have met me, but for those of you who have not, my name's Dale Carlson. I live on Catelpa Drive, and I'm the secretary of the Berkeley Historical Committee since 2019. I am here tonight to make two announcements regarding the activities of our committee. First, I'd like to announce that the Berkeley Historical Museum inside the old fire and police station at 3338 Coolidge Highway, right over there, will be slightly expanding its hours for the foreseeable future and opening to the public from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the second Thursday night of each month. Just so you don't have to run to your calendars to look up the dates, those extra Thursday evening openings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. will occur on October 10th, November 14th, and December 12th, 2024. Also, please be reminded of our regular hours, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Wednesdays and 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Sundays. The second announcement I'd like to make tonight is the date and time of our rapidly approaching 2024 Berkeley Kit Homes Tour. Last year's inaugural event was a massive success, attended by over 150 people, and we expect this year's event to be just as excellent. The tour will take place on Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and you can learn more about it and how to buy tickets simply by Googling the phrase "2024 Berkeley Kit Home Tour" and clicking on the top result. You can also go to berkeleychamber.com to get the same link. You can also volunteer to be a tour docent and earn free entry to the event, assuming all of our volunteer shifts aren't already taken. You can find the link to the signup Genius page for tour docents on the very same page where you buy tickets. Again, just Google the phrase "2024 Berkeley Kit Home Tour," click on the top result, and go from there, or just go to berkeleychamber.com. Thank you so much for providing the Berkeley Historical Committee the time to inform the community of these upcoming happenings. We hope to see all of you in the very near future, either in the museum or the 2024 Berkeley Kit Home Tour. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Bridgette. This is my husband Gordon Marley on Buckingham and Berkeley, and I first would like to thank you, Mayor, for your opening remarks.
You're welcome.
That meant the world. It has been 25 years since Columbine, and there have been 417 school shootings, with the most recent occurring just 12 days ago. Our effort to protect our children from the devastating impact of assault rifles have been alarmingly insufficient. These weapons remain accessible and frequently used in these tragic events. It is inconceivable that in 25 years, we have not made enough progress in enacting gun control reform to protect us from mass shootings. The current state of our nation prioritizes the rights of assault rifles over the child's fundamental right to a safe education, free from threat of violence. When I discovered that Berkeley had no restrictions preventing a gun store from opening just a minute's walk from our high school, I knew immediate action was necessary. I am incredibly thankful that the community's concerns were addressed and that the proposed gun store will not be open. I am very grateful to that business owner. However, our work is not as far from complete. I urge city council, the zoning commission, the community relations, and all the bodies to implement regulations to prohibit not only gun stores but also vape shops. Believe it or not, they're allowed to open up close to our schools. These should be added to the list of currently restricted businesses, which also includes cannabis dispensaries, liquor stores, and other age-related businesses. Our children deserve to learn in an environment where their safety is a priority, so let's ensure that our zoning laws reflect this commitment. Thank you for your time. And for the record, Jeremiah, your Papa and Giggay are doing something.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Hi, Carla Osborne, Berkeley resident. Same as Bridgette, I'd really like to thank you, Mayor Dean, for your opening remarks. It did come as a huge surprise to majority of Berkeley residents, who we recently figured out, found out that there is no state or federal regulation to where a gun shop can open. We can regulate cigarettes, we can regulate booze to where a school's at, but not guns. Sure, cigarettes and booze are killing people. Guns, it's a little different. You know, if you do a quick Google search of gun shops near me, top five that hit right here from here in Berkeley, Target Sports is on Woodward, you've got IFA on Mound, Sportsman's Warehouse in the back parking lot of Oakland Mall, another one on DeQuinder, Livonia Schoolcraft. What do all of these have in common? They're on a main thoroughfare road. Do they not have around them? They don't have schools. So it's very important that we get this ordinance and these zoning restrictions in place as soon as possible. I know that's something that you guys have been working on. I know that it's something that we have fallen into this with our puppy stores, where we're on the back end of this, trying to dig ourselves out. We're being contacted by other cities to come and talk at their council meetings to explain what happened in Berkeley so that they can enact those ordinances in their cities so they don't have the same thing happen that we had here where it's too late. We don't want to be on the back end of this with a gun store. So I ask that you keep this in mind when things come before you and make sure that you, you know, really take a good look at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Carla.
Good evening. My name's Mark Keast. I live in Berkeley. I'm the father of two. I have a son at Rogers and a son at Anderson. I'm also an assistant prosecuting attorney in Oakland County. I prosecuted the school shooter, the Oxford High School, as well as his parents. I want to say, first of all, thank you, Mayor Dean.
Thank you to the two of you.
And the front row here for alerting the city to what was about to happen. We all know that gun violence is the leading cause of death of children. That is a fact. There's no one way to solve this. What we do know is that preventing access is key. That is one theme. For better or worse, over the last two and a half years, I've become intimately familiar with what lack of access and accessibility really means. One aspect of that is safe storage. Safe storage laws have gone a long way to help this endeavor. That is crucial. Another way, and something that I've personally learned through the Oxford cases, is preventing a troubled child from becoming fascinated with dangerous weapons. The idea that a firearm store could open up literally in the parking lot of where the high school football team practices and where the Steelers practice, where my third grader will walk up and down Coolidge at his downtown business walk, where my son will go to get ice cream, is, quite frankly, is absurd. So I wanted to thank you very much, Mayor Dean, for making those comments. I wanted to voice my full and complete support to amendment of the ordinance. It will not infringe upon anyone's right to keep or bear arms. Other cities have done the same. This is what the city has done with marijuana. This is a topic that, like I said, I have become all too familiar with, and I truly, truly want to impress upon everyone here that there is a simple and easy way to do at least something, and this is a very easy fix here, and I implore you to do that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Bear. I live on Gardner. I'm here to talk about the chipper program, or lack thereof. I'm a senior. I've lived in my current house for 56 years, and up until the time that we got a new chipper, the city was always able to accommodate when I cut down shrubbery, when I cut down wild trees that infringe on my neighbor's driveway, so they have to be cut down. I don't have the money to hire a private shipping service three times a year when I have to cut these wild things down. I don't have the money or the energy to cut them up into small bundles and stick a $3 sticker on it. I just think that the city that cares should take its seniors into consideration when it comes to these kind of things. I hope you'll take that into thought, make some kind of exceptions for seniors that need help, something like that. I know the city's not broke because you've got three dispensaries that you're getting money from now. You've got a number of houses that have replaced 100 or 1,000-square-foot house with a 2,000-plus square-foot house, which gives you a remarkably different tax base. I don't think it should be a matter of cost to be able to help your seniors. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate you listening.
Greg DeRoz, Bacon Avenue. It's more of a request. I know you're not going to, you're not likely to respond, but I'm curious to know if the community can get a status report on how our city manager search is going, and in particular, if you've received a report from the survey that was done back in early August, is there, are there any plans to release that information that asks for people's opinions on what we're looking for in the city manager, what our priorities are for the city? I think that's important information to communicate and share with the city. So I'm here to ask that you do that, perhaps at the next meeting or through some other way. Thank you.
My name is Nick Forte. I'm a resident of Troy, but a Berkeley property owner with one child in the School of Choice Program at Berkeley High and one recently graduated Berkeley High. I'm here to continue the dialogue about the proposed firearm shop that was considering initially and echo some of the comments, but also thank you, the city council, Mayor Dean, and everybody within the city for your response and communicating with the community. I know there definitely was some alarm within the community. You know, I guess what I wanted to add is just kind of stress the sense of urgency to address these issues within the zoning efforts, the rezoning efforts. You know, this isn't the first business to come on Coolidge recently, with the vape shop that just closed recently on Coolidge, even slightly closer to the school. You know, it's something that will continue to occur until this is addressed. So I guess I would plead with everybody to make this a priority as we're assessing and reviewing the zoning. You know, I personally think that there should be some dialogue about what that zone looks like. You know, I know seeing kids walk to and from school and during lunch, there's hundreds of students that go as far as Baggerdaves, which is even a little closer to about a half a mile. It's about 2,000 to 2,500 feet from the school. And you've already started to assess where those zones are within the city that might be more appropriate for these. You know, and I guess, you know, the biggest thing I wanted to add is really just considering, you know, as we look to implement the businesses, the quicker that we can make that happen, the better, because if another business comes into play before something happens and your hands continue to be tied, you know, it really could start to put stress on the community from the standpoint of considering what is a family-oriented zone, an area, and if Coolidge is perceived as not family-friendly anymore, what the ripple effects could have as it impacts the community and communities' families stop supporting that local area, stop attending events, and what that does to those businesses, and if they were to start to look to relocate and move the implications on the vacancies, the rent decreasing in that area, attracting other businesses, and how that would ripple into the community and taxes. So I just want everybody to continue the dialogue. We look forward to hearing what those next steps are and participating, and just ask for, you know, your sense of urgency, please, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor Dean and council members. I am Virginia Abramson. I live in Royal Oak. I'm a member of the Board of the Ezra Parker Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution that services this community. September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. The Constitution establishes the rule of law and the power as well as the limits of government, while enabling us to choose those who will govern. It also employs the responsibility of our citizens to understand it and to support it. It is the oldest written instrument of democratic rule still in use in the world, inspiring many to come here and contribute to the nation that created it. We hope you and the people of Berkeley will use Constitution Week as an opportunity to reread this inspirational document and affirm its ideals, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. The DAR has promoted Constitution Week since President Dwight Eisenhower signed it into law in 1956. More than a million women have joined the DAR since its founding in 1890. Today, nearly 200,000 members advance our missions of education, historic preservation, and patriotism. Last year, members around the world gave 7 million volunteer hours in service to our communities. Right now, there may be a woman in this room or watching this meeting who knows that her ancestors supported the cause for independence. We encourage her to visit dar.org to learn how she may join us. Thank you.
My name is Carol Leiber, and I'm a resident of Huntington Woods. My son attends Berkeley High School, and I'm delighted tonight to see how seriously the mayor and the city commission are taking the issue of a gun shop in Berkeley. You know, I just, I can't imagine my son walking to school or going out with his friends at lunch and passing a store selling killing machines. It just blows my mind that that could be the case. So I urge you, stay on this. Push hard. Don't let it go, because this isn't the last one that's going to come before you. I mean, that is going to want to move into Berkeley. So please do all you can, and thank you for your efforts so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Stephanie Poyer, Berkeley resident. Hello, council and Mayor Dean. Thank you for letting us speak on this. As a mother of two young children and a former high school teacher, I would like to voice my concern regarding the potential for a gun shop to open in downtown Berkeley, particularly in such close proximity to schools, libraries, and neighborhoods. The location in question is a high-traffic, walkable part of town, and as a patron of our local businesses, I can say that I personally would not feel comfortable walking past a gun shop to window shop, to get ice cream, to sit outside at a restaurant, walk around with a coffee, and attend many of the events that Berkeley hosts all down that corridor. And I certainly would not feel comfortable bringing my children. As a former teacher, I can say that I wouldn't feel comfortable teaching in a place that has a gun shop so close by, particularly in today's climate. What message are we sending to the children and students, the teachers, and residents of Berkeley by allowing a business such as this to open in a location where they walk by on a daily basis? I know, obviously, things have come to light, you know, and I'm very appreciative that, like everyone said, that you've taken, you know, the time to truly reflect on this and that the owner of the shop has stepped forward and withdrawn their application. But I would continue to ask that we prioritize our children and all of the residents, safety and mental health. I would urge the council to update the zoning ordinances to restrict the location of gun shops in Berkeley. My preference would be none at all, or at minimum, not in the DDA, and as far away from any and all schools as possible. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Chestnut, and I'm a Berkeley resident as well. As Steph said, my preference as well is to have it away from not only schools but downtown areas. My child is five and started in Berkeley schools this past month, and within a week and a half of starting school, we had a school shooting in Georgia, and I can tell you that that next day of sending my child to school was so awful. I gave them the tightest hug and just hoped that they would come home safe to me. And to then have this news come to light about a potential gun shop opening and within walking distance to our schools, but like Steph said, to libraries, other businesses we frequent, wouldn't make me want to participate in the downtown area. And I really appreciate all that you're doing and just ask that you consider not only the distance to schools, but in the downtown area too, because there are so many families that despite whether their children are in school or not, we're frequenting businesses, and I also wouldn't feel comfortable with being downtown with that kind of business. Thank you.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. I'm horribly disappointed at the news. Thank you for sharing it. Horribly disappointed at that. Like you said, Mayor Dean, it is a legal business. It meets all the requirements for being in that space. Everything was fine and dandy. What we keep, I've heard several times now, what are we teaching our children? What are we teaching our children when a small, very vocal, very loud minority can bully somebody to leave? bully somebody to leave, leave their plans behind and not open a business here in Berkeley in a space that has been vacant for quite some time?
Hi, my name is Hannah. I am from Huntington Woods. I wanted to echo my support for the ordinance changing to make it more restrictive, to have a gun shop in, near the schools and near the downtown area. I also wanted to echo the support of this man here, I don't remember his name, about having more other restrictions or ideas about perhaps having efforts more for gun safety in terms of gun storage or gun locks. I'd like to see that bolstered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, 3338 Coolidge Highway. And I really wanted to, since it's not on the agenda, make a plug for downtown Brookley. It's bone chillingly close. We have our skeletons. Dozens of Berkeley families have been decorating the Brookley skeletons. It'll be throughout the two miles of our beautiful downtown. And I just want to share that that opportunity still exists. You can go to downtownbrookley.com and sign up. There's a few more weeks for you to pick up a skeleton or a few for your family, for your business, for your scout troop, for your fraternal organization, for your religious organization. There are many ways that it can be a gathering and a celebration of all that makes Berkeley great, and we really enjoy this festive and family-friendly celebration. And we hope that you'll visit downtownbrookley.com to find out how you can be involved in the free activity of decorating a skeleton. There will be a skeleton decorating party, which is definitely a crowd pleaser. We started that last year, and that is planned for the last Sunday in September, September 29th, at Allman's Health and Beauty at Coolidge in Franklin. And I won't steal any more thunder from our DDA liaison, Councilman Baker with his closing comments, but just want to make sure that people knew that there were skeletons for the taking, artificial skeletons for the decoration taking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, have you received any communication for tonight's public comment?
Yes, I have, Madam Mayor. Corey Pete of Berkeley, Irene Reich of Berkeley, Valerie Phillips of Berkeley, Mariah Seifel of Berkeley, Ellie Moscow, Berkeley Schools parent, Sarah Priebala, Berkeley, Michelle Minders, Berkeley, Lorraine Branch, Berkeley, Ally Morici, Berkeley Schools, Ronet Wagman, Berkeley Schools, Emma Nickel, Berkeley, Caitlin Gask, Berkeley, and Ashley Poyer, Berkeley, would all like an ordinance put in place that prohibits gun shops from opening and operating near our schools and greater downtown footprint.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 12, 2024, and City Council Work Session on Tuesday, July 30, 2024. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1402. Three, motion number M7224, matter of approving the 2024-2025 Winter Maintenance Agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and City of Berkeley. The city will be reimbursed a total of $12,449.94, which will be paid in two installments, $6,224.97 due in December 2024, and $6,224.97 due in March 2025. Four, motion number M7324, matter of approving a budgeted purchase of four Ford F-250 pickup trucks from Lunghammer Ford of Owasso, Michigan, utilizing the State of Michigan McComb County Cooperative Bid Contract number 071B7700180. The purchase is budgeted under accounts 592-536-985-000, water and sewer vehicle; 101-441-985-000, general fund vehicles; 226-528-985-000, sanitation vehicles; and 208-751-982-000, parks and rec equipment. Five, motion number M7424, matter of approving a budgeted contract for sewer lining services with SAC Construction, utilizing the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Group. $800,000 was budgeted for this work under account 592-902-971-150. Motion number M7524, matter of amending the City of Berkeley's fee schedule to eliminate the non-resident library card fee and ad fees for the annual parking permit, annual parking permit application, and annual parking permit replacement. Seven, motion number M7624, matter of considering the budgeted purchase and installation of the Vigilon security system and exterior cameras at the library as proposed by Presidio for $22,050.54 from account 101-790-983-000, office equipment. Eight, motion number M7724, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions. Nine, motion number M7824, matter of authorizing the Berkeley Instrumental Boosters Orchestra Association, 2325 Cotelpa Drive, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct Berkeley Tag Days 2024 in the City of Berkeley on Friday, October 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Ten, motion number M7924, matter of authorizing the City Manager to approve the contract with Carlisle-Wartman Associates to provide conceptual plan design for an urban plaza park lot at the Dorothea Rhodes Street Stub as part of the awarded SEMCOG Planning Grant. Eleven, proclamation number P1924, matter proclaiming October 2024 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. Twelve, proclamation number P2024, matter proclaiming October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thirteen, proclamation number P2124, matter proclaiming October 2024 as National Cyber Security Awareness Month. Fourteen, proclamation number P2224, matter proclaiming October 2024 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And fifteen, proclamation number P2324, matter proclaiming September 2024 as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions Presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from Assistant to the City Manager, Charlena Stevenson, introducing Project Pink.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm presenting on Project Pink. First, I wanted to start off by saying thank you for allowing me to have this space, as well as I am very fortunate to be able to bring this great pilot program to the City of Berkeley, as well as this was a project that the Wellness Committee, which is a committee with staff members from different departments, wanted to make sure that we were taking care of our residents, staff, and our community members. Okay, so just to explain, what is Project Pink? Project Pink was started earlier this year in February. There was a question about the feminine hygiene dispenser in the bathroom. The only place in the city that had a dispenser was in City Hall, and each item was 25 cents. While some understand 25 cents to be an easy purchase, it's not always an easy purchase for everyone who comes to enjoy our beautiful community. Our former city manager helped with the pilot program, which used a lot, which allowed us to start this program in all public-facing bathrooms, which allowed all feminine hygiene products to be free to anyone who visits our bathroom, and it was just anonymous. This, so when we were in the actual bathroom here, we saw that there was a few issues with the feminine hygiene products. That's coming soon. And I really thought this was a great initiative, and the Wellness Committee did as well, and I'm really grateful to have the backing for this. So this is our timeline. So I am holding a feminine hygiene product from 1970. This was something that was in our bathrooms from 1970 until February of this year. This hygiene product is older than myself, which is a little crazy to me, but I thought it was the good time to actually change this and make it more healthier for everyone and making things more inclusive and not having to pay 25 cents because you don't really ask for any of these things to happen to you. And in the, and then what we sell, not sell, but give away the Project Pink, it happens in all municipal buildings, public-facing bathrooms, so in City Hall, our library, and the community center. Since February of us starting this, we have refilled this 10 times, which is not that bad, especially during peak season around the summertime, so when we have camps, when we have different kind of events and different visitors, that's when we usually have to up it a little bit more. But it has been very steady, and we have gotten a lot of good feedback from the community and our library, as well as seeing that it's being used in the proper way. This program has been going on for 27 weeks, which is six months and three weeks, give or take a couple, and it's been very successful. All participating buildings all can contact me, and then we're able to replenish that, and it's something that was a slight oversight, but it's something that's been corrected. And I wanted to share this as well, and also leave time for any questions or comments.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for identifying the need and for taking the initiative to make this better for not only residents but guests who come and visit here in Berkeley. I do recognize that box because I'm ancient. Yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous, so thank you for bringing us all into the 21st century. Appreciate your work on that. Any questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Vilani?
I just want to echo Mayor Dean on behalf of everyone that menstruates in this city or that comes into this city. There's nothing worse than being caught off guard, and so to have supplies that you're not terrified of, the age of, and having that accessible, I think, just helps to weak here, and it just makes it a better experience coming here. Good work.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say one quick thing. Despite all the noise that's out there that we hear in our community, in the state, in the country, you know, especially election time, it's always great when you can kind of look and say, there is great stuff happening. And this is another example of the type of people we have working here in the City of Berkeley that are working proactively to address needs when they see them. And we'll continue to look for opportunities to share the good stories that are happening here because there's a lot of them that don't get told, but we're going to make sure they get told here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
It's also the second time that we've had her bring something really incredible in very recent time to us, so extra kudos to you for just continuing to build our city in an amazing way.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from Anna Conores of Main Street, Oakland County, recognizing downtown Berkeley for re-accreditation as a national Main Street community.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and present this. I have an amazing job. I get to work in downtowns and with downtowns and work on economic development. Sorry, wrote a few things down. So tonight, I'm going to be presenting the DDA with their accreditation certificate from National Main Street. This is the sixth accreditation that Berkeley has gone through. I've gotten to present for all of them except for one during COVID, which we didn't present on. I think we sent it in, the picture of the accreditation in. But just kind of who we are real quick. Main Street America leads a collaborative movement with partners and grassroots leaders that advance shared prosperity, create resilient economies, and improve the quality of life through place-based economic development and community preservation in downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts across the country. In Oakland County, we are the only county-wide Main Street program, coordinating program, and we have 28 communities who participate in our program. Overall, National Main Street provides a proven track record with over 40 years of economic power in downtown or neighborhood commercial districts. Oakland County has 24 years being a coordinating program. And I just wanted to give you a couple quick impact from the program. In 2023, $5.68 billion were reinvested locally through the Main Street program. There were 6,630 net new businesses, 35,162 net jobs gained, 10,556 buildings were rehabilitated, and 1.6 million volunteer hours. I think that is a really huge statistic because that's all basically free labor, right? We all know Main Street and DDA's don't have a huge budget, and that represents a lot of money that was saved. And I think the big thing is that Main Street is a grassroots organization. It truly is led through the volunteers, and it is a bottom-up organization that provides the community what they want, you know, that sense of place and all the businesses and such. So super happy to be able to present your accreditation certificate again in 2012. We always look back, so this is a 2024 accreditation that looked at 2023. Thank you so much, and a big thank you to the council because, as I like to remind all of our DDA directors, they wouldn't be around if it weren't for you, providing the DDA, bringing it to life, and then continually supporting the DDA. It's a big thing and super important, that relationship, so thank you.
Don't go anywhere, please. Mr. McGinnis, is there anything you'd like to say?
Very briefly, I want to thank Main Street Oakland County, Ms. Norris and the entire team there. It's very unique. Oakland County, as she alluded to, is the only county-level organization in the whole nation that has a dedicated Main Street program. And by us going through this process, it means that we are eligible at a higher level, a greater degree of access to resources and support. So as one example, they provide a technical services grant to those select-level Main Streets that this is a very key component of. And this year, what we've invested those $7,500 of grant resources in is a refresh of our website, so that way it could be more accessible, more responsive, and feel fresh. So the refresh, we look forward to partnering with our volunteers and our collaborators that help make the marketing promotions and engagement possible in our downtown. So that's one example of many. There are others, but by us going through this, this greater scrutiny, the higher degree of being compliant, it yields benefits for our businesses, and most importantly, for the greater community who loves our downtown and gets to benefit from it. So thank you for that, and Berkeley is the better for our select level, our prestigious level as a downtown, which is befitting because it is such a special place. Our downtown's amazing. But there are many downtowns in Michigan and around the country that don't go through this extra rigor. Their loss, our gain, and we'll keep doing the Their loss, our gain, and we'll keep doing the hard work.
Well, I want to thank you for going through the extra rigmarole because as a former Berkeley business owner, I know I benefited from the resources from Main Street Oakland. Business consulting, events, different resources that I was connected with. So thank you selfishly, and for our community, I know it's much appreciated. I know it's a heavy lift, so thank you for doing this all the time, every time, bringing your best, calling us to our best. And Ms. Norris, thank you so much for partnering with us for this. We're just happy to be part of Main Street Oakland and Main Street America.
And when she goes to present these to other cities, the news doesn't show up. So there you go.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Sorry.
Thanks. Just as a coda, as liaison to the DDA, it's been amazing to see the progress over the years. And so kudos to this organization, this particular team, and your predecessors for having the wisdom and insight and foresight to begin this journey six years ago, and terrific work. If I may ask a process question, the approach that we take, the rigmarole that we work through, could you kind of highlight a little bit of that? Because this isn't just filling out a form. There's a lot more involved in this process, and I was hoping if you'd be able to share a little bit about how extensively we've demonstrated the value that our downtown brings to our community.
Yes, thank you for that. I did have a little bit more, but I always feel like, sometimes I feel like it takes up too much time. So, yeah, there are actually six accreditation standards, and they kind of all have to be ticked off. And so the first is a broad-based community commitment to revitalization. So you supporting the DDA, the DDA supporting the businesses, and broader. Inclusive leadership and organizational capacity. It is required that they have a full-time director of the organization because we believe it is such a big job. It's not just events, right? It's economic development. Standard three is diversified funding and sustainable program operations. So in Michigan, we look at that slightly differently because DDAs have funding, but we always encourage outside funding, right? And we do our best to provide grants and such to the communities. So that helps to, I know that you will be received. We received in Oakland County $5 million for Main Streets for, it was ARPA money that was left. We tried to go after a RAP grant together collectively with the Main Streets. That didn't work, but we did get the $5 million ARPA funds to go towards placemaking. There were 15 communities that are involved in that and splitting up that $5 million. So those extra fundings help towards the diversification.
Berkeley is one of them.
Yes. So standard four is strategy-driven programming, right? So do you have a work plan? Do you follow the four points? And the four points hopefully people remember. You just think of me, dope, and it's design, organization, preservation, and economic vitality. Preservation-based economic development. Preservation is extremely important when it comes to downtowns and Main Street and that sense of place, right? If it's a brand-new place, it takes a long time to provide that sense of place. And then the last is just the overall impact and results of those five standards. So it does take a bit. It's a full day typically. We bring in outside people that do what we do in other states, other coordinating program leaders, and look at the overall process. So it takes a little bit of time, and it takes effort to pull it all together. So Mike does a great job, and the DDA board is extremely supportive, and that's a huge part of it as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Having sat in on some of those interviews over the years, I can certainly attest to the thoroughness with which that third-party inquires about what's going on here. So this is truly a well-deserved recognition, and I'm very pleased to see that we continue to make progress. So thank you.
Mr. Geiser, you're welcome.
I just want to say there's no way this accreditation would happen without Mr. McGinnis. I have met a lot of DDA directors in my years. I have never met anybody that brings so much energy and creativity to the table, especially when it comes to creating a buzz within a community. I remember the first event I was at was the ribbon cutting for Bombshell Treat Bar, and this voice just, I mean, you can't help but be intoxicated by that. So to have that kind of resource here, there's a lot to be thankful for.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, Mr. McGinnis, thank you.
I've never been called intoxicated before. That was very kind. But sir, if you're willing to be paparazzi further, we could do a whole photo with the posse, unless you want to be the paparazzi.
I can be the paparazzi. Just if you could send me those.
You can be down low, and you can be up high. See how it looks.
But close together?
Window pane in here.
Let us know if you need us to shift any bodies.
No, I just got it. It's an Apple phone. I'm still not used to it. That's some late game. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Really appreciate you.
Thanks so much.
Run the gauntlet.
He's not going to live that down for a while.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-8024, matter of approving a request for an indefinite road closure of Dorothea between Coolidge and the alleyway to facilitate a seasonal downtown public space.
Is there a motion to approve M-8024?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Geiser.
Yes, I'm not sure if we want Mr. McGinnis to come back up here or even Kristin. This is a joint effort relating to the item that was under the consent agenda. Essentially, this is an action that's needed to help us implement that once those designs come in. And if there's any questions, I mean, both of them are here to answer any questions.
Ms. Kampalansky, would you like to come up and say, I don't know, a few words perhaps?
This is a companion piece to the larger, long-term project of creating a public plaza or parklet at the Dorothea Road Stub Street. For those who are watching who might not be familiar with the location, it is the street that comes off of Coolidge to the east, and then, this takes me a second, stubs into the municipal parking lot that is adjacent to the field where the Berkeley Bears currently practice and the Steelers practice. It's kind of a road to nowhere, so it really presents a nice opportunity for us to activate that space, particularly since it's part of the right-of-way, and we already have jurisdiction over that. So I think Director McGinnis had some plans for some short-term closure opportunities and staging as we go through DDA events, and then my department will work on the long-term plan.
Thank you. I love a good collaboration. Any questions from council? Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, just thought of this. Will we be updating the road signs just to make it clear that, you know, we're not pointing people to parking down that stub of Dorothea?
I'll just get up because I'm closer, but Director Young said yes, we will be doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? No, you're good. Okay, public comment.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. This request is for an indefinite closure of Dorothea. The request is less than half complete. There are no numbers. There is no budget, no cost associated with that for an indefinite closure. Somebody's got to put barricades up to the question about signage. Signage would need to be put up. There is no mention in the proposal that was included in the packet for those costs, where they would come from, who would be paying them, how much would they be. There's also nothing in there about things like the bistro lighting, the landscaping and all that, but also on the indefinite basis, if you put up barricades, have your event, take them down, there's maintenance, cleanup, all the rest of that. Where are those costs all going to come from? How much will they be? It's a lot of unknowns. There is also a downtown public space a half a block south, just the other side of Coolidge. There's a plaza that the city, the DDA, and the school district got together and put together, and there's that downtown public space there that could be used with no additional costs or minor additional costs because we're not closing off a road. We're not putting in bistro lighting. We're not doing any landscaping. It's already done. I urge you to deny this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geiser, can we have the timer back up for? Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item?
Good evening on this downtown-filled council meeting. The request before you is intentionally and strategically in the concept of indefinite, meaning that it isn't for one day or just a three-month period. This council, this honorable body, has the authority to determine whether that needs to be more brief. It is an experiment to see very directly what would be the cost incurred for the activation of it as a public space. This is for short-term utilization, especially during the coming holiday seasons, both bookly season and the holiday shopping season that immediately follows after. In the memorandum that I prepared for the council, it alludes and references that the Downtown Development Authority is the entity that would be incurring the cost when it comes to the staging, the lighting, the landscaping, the seating. Those are the nuts and bolts that we would be activating. The vision is to take it from the stub, and it seems like it's technically called a stub, take it from there to a hub. The downtown master plan calls for specifically this location to be activated as a public space. And really, what we're trying to do is respond to the organic use that has already been unfolding with new businesses, restaurants, establishments, and more pedestrian activity during that lunch hour for the students. Those families interacting with football practice, those increased customers. We have reached out to the surrounding businesses and parts, so that way it is a public-private collaboration. Most immediately, at that target area we're talking about is Bombshell Treat Bar. They already have seen increased litter, you know, in the sense of there's more debris that comes from when their customers are no longer consuming their delicious downtown Berkeley confections. Where does that go? So they have, at their own expense, added additional trash receptacles that their staff is clearing out. We want to work with them to partner where it is strategic. But this is a short-term implementation that helps inform the long-term strategy. In your consent agenda, you did accept and was acting on that SEMCON grant that Director Kampalansky was able to secure for that long-term planning. So that way we can go for the larger outside funding grant and philanthropic funding or other, you know, governmental agencies that want to be a part of the downtown Berkeley excitement. This is us getting those pieces in place to act on that. I will say that if this body votes on this action tonight, my intention is to activate it in very short order in consultation with Public Safety and Public Works on what works for them. You would be empowering us with that action. So if you don't like that, don't vote for it because that is the idea. And it would be at the DDA expense where we would have permanent, semi-permanent installations to create those barriers, but the landscaping with appropriate signage and sort of that phased-in barricading. So it might look very similar for some to how Griffith was temporarily closed. Griffith was not vacated as a public street. It was temporarily closed per this honorable body's authorization. There was a certain type of road barricade that was utilized. We may utilize that at the beginning to sort of alert folks that otherwise are frequently passing there. But we have the ability with this municipal road to do it in a very aesthetically pleasing landscaped way that still keeps those pedestrians safe. We have a Mogo Bike Share program that downtown Berkeley is a part of, and it parts not getting well utilized because one of the Coolidge station is tucked behind Vibe Credit Union at Earlmont. If the municipal government is cool with it, we would be interested in moving, at least temporarily, see how it goes, increases ridership and access to connect us to this regional bike-share network, moving that to the Dorothea space as well. Those are the creative ways in which we want to activate it. And it would also help us learn what are the impacts on the surrounding businesses, those that live, you know, the other residential streets, the traffic impact. But we are talking about 120 feet by 24 feet. We, as the DDA, paid for the mural that is on that, sort of adjacent to that public space. The DDA would be intent on having other installations of public art in other ways in which it would be very pleasant. And that would be, of course, all with the consent and collaboration with the municipal government, who truly calls the shots on the public's right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm closing public comment. Any other questions or discussion from council? All right. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-8024.
Hennan?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Ordinance number O-824, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to amend Section 30-186 through 30-189 of Article 5 Rental Property of Chapter 30 Businesses of the Berkeley City Code to allow for the regulation, licensing, and collection of fees associated with short-term rentals. Prescribe a penalty for violations and repeal conflicting ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-0824?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Black with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Geiser.
Yes, as council may recall, I believe it was our last meeting, you had all asked us to bring back some recommendations, updating our rental ordinance that did not specifically call out short-term rentals, which, as Director Kampalansky will discuss, are defined as being 30 days or less. Asking for some various regulations as we've been kind of working through some matters at one of our short-term rentals in the community. I think it is important to note, as Director Kampalansky will discuss, short-term rentals are not new here. This is not something we've traditionally had a challenge with. But as we have found with some of our neighboring communities, this is not an area where we had to just, oh my God, address in our code as of yet. So that is, tonight, we'll be talking about our current recommendations. So with that.
So I will go ahead and highlight some of the things that we're proposing as part of this ordinance. As interim city manager Geisner said, we have not had any issue with most of the short-term rentals in the community. Based on our best guess and survey of these types of websites, which, if you'll recall, do not list specific addresses, so they'll just say whether or not it's located in the city or not. We have about 15 short-term rentals operating right now. So just keep that in mind as we go through the recommendations. Short-term rentals would include those that are renting for 30 days or less. That would be a definition that would be added to the ordinance. And there are several different provisions that would be added that short-term rentals would have to follow that our current rental ordinance does not include for long-term rentals. So to be clear, long-term rentals would follow the same procedures that they currently follow. These regulations would be for short-term rentals only. To begin with, long-term rentals, excuse me, are inspected by our department on a two-year interval basis. Short-term rentals would receive annual inspections. Just for the public's knowledge, when our department's going out to inspect, they're looking for life safety issues and property maintenance violations. Property maintenance would be on the outside. Life safety is going to be smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, things like that on the inside. After an inspection, a property owner, if they need to address some of those, is given the opportunity to do that, and then we do a second inspection. So that's how that process works, and that would be done on an annual basis for short-term rentals. There would be some additional application and registration documents for short-term rentals that long-term rentals are not required to provide. Specifically, a floor plan is something we would be looking for. And that's because occupancy for short-term rentals would be limited to no more than two adults per bedroom with a maximum capacity of 10 adults. So we would want to be able to identify those bedrooms. There's also some definitions in the International Building Code that talk a little bit about what a bedroom can and can't be and the elements that it has to have to be counted towards that. So that would be part of the inspection as well. So that would be part of the inspection as well. Two off-street parking spaces would need to be available on any property that's proposed to be used as a short-term rental. Most of our single-family homes in particular provide this, but there are a few that do not. Properties could not be advertised to accommodate more than the number of available sleeping areas or the 10 adults that it's not to exceed. That would be addressed, should there be any violations, on a complaint basis. The next is that the property owner or rental unit manager's contact information and the occupancy limit must be posted both inside and outside the short-term rental in a place that's easily visible. In addition, the city's noise ordinance would have to be posted inside the short-term rental in a place that's easily visible, and that would be part of that annual inspection as well. Accessory uses, so pools, garages, studios, things like that, could not be offered for a separate rental. So there are services out there where you can rent a pool and just the pool for the day. That would not be allowed. Other than that, there's some minor language tweaks and things and some other more minor items that I'd be happy to answer any questions on, but I did want to just highlight the major things that we're proposing. And please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kampelansky. Any questions from council? Councilmember Vilani?
Yes, so thank you for the updates and the revisions to the ordinance. As you mentioned, many of our short-term rentals, we don't even know they're there and they operate without issue, and then every now and then, something comes up where there are concerns about how one is operating. Do you feel that with the changes that we have in place, that whether it be your department, Public Safety will be better equipped and armed, for lack of a better word, to address any issues that are coming up to make sure that we have compliance all around?
Yes, I do, and I don't want to speak for Public Safety Chief Keynes here to address any of those questions that you may have, but yes, this will allow us to know exactly where short-term rental properties are located, something we don't have the ability to do now because they're not specifically advertised by address. And we're able to keep an extra eye on those through code enforcement of things if we need to. We're also able to get on top of issues before their notice as a violation because of these inspection provisions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this forward and for all the work that went into preparing this and researching and putting forth this thoughtful proposal. Kind of building on my colleagues' questions, we mentioned there was about 15, and we know the city of location, but not the exact addresses. So would, if this were to pass and proceed and become active, how would we know when we get those 15? Is this sort of like they have to come forward and say, hey, I'm one of those 15? Or is there an approach that we have thought through with the strategy to like maybe we book a reservation at each one that says Berkeley and say, oh, okay, hi, come here? You know, something like that. I'm just curious how we can assure ourselves and our neighbors and residents that we actually have all of them, or could anybody just slip under the radar by not raising their hand and coming to City Hall? Any thoughts on?
Yes, there are a couple of ways we can do this, and thank you so much for pointing out the work that went into this because I had forgotten to mention that our building official, Emily Loomis, did a lot of the legwork on this, so I should give her credit for that. And then we also have a rental licensing clerk who is very on top of keeping relationships with our current rental properties. So right now, short-term rentals do have to register as a rental. They don't have to indicate whether they're a long-term rental or a short-term rental, but they need to be registered as a rental property. So one way that we would catch those is those expire, right? So when they come in to register again, they're going to have to register as either a short or long-term rental, and every property will have to do this. Our licensing clerk, Angela Randazzo, also does a great job of following up with all of our rental property owners and keeping tabs on where some of these may be. I don't want to say that we know specifically where all of them are, but she reaches out on a regular basis to those landlords to make sure that they're in compliance with city standards. And then if anything comes up via violations or issues with public safety, that's another way that we would get notified that there might be something different going on there.
Great, is, thank you for that, and again, kudos to you and the team for all the hard work that's gone into this. So if somebody had just applied for their license like three months ago, they'd conceivably have more than a year and a half until that license for rental property would expire. So if nothing goes wrong, if they don't have any complaints or things like that, they would conceptually kind of just be there until it's time to renew that two-year thing, which say, we would say choose box A or box B?
Yes, that's absolutely true. That could be the case. The short-term rentals that we think we have in the city, there hasn't been problems with the majority of them. So if somebody is registered as a rental property and because of no complaints from neighbors or no code violations or anything like that, and we're not aware that they're a short-term rental, it would have to wait until they expire before they would come in and register as a short-term rental.
Right, so we're looking at most, you know, two years or less until we've kind of got them all figured out, and again, I'm glad to hear that so many of these that are operating above board and providing a quality experience for folks that choose to vacation in Berkeley, and looking forward to them coming and enjoying our new parklets and the wonderful things we have in our downtown.
And I might point out, the fact that there might be some lapse in time before they're required to register as a short-term rental is really no different than the way that we look at long-term rentals now. There are properties that are out there as long-term rentals that we don't know they're being rented out, and it might not come to our attention until a neighbor lets us know or there's a complaint or a code violation, et cetera. Sometimes landlords really don't know that they have to register. But as things come in and property transfers come in and things like that, we're able to keep tabs on them, but sometimes it does take a little time to catch up.
Great, thank you, and I'm sure we can use the communication mechanisms that we have to kind of let folks know about it, too.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you again for all the great work.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, going off of that, if we have, we have someone that is, okay, let's say they're registered as a long-term rental right now, or as a rental right now, and we find they're in violation of short-term rental provisions and we learn they are a short-term rental, are we able to enforce, even though they have not registered yet, as a short-term rental?
So I'm going to throw that question over to Attorney Chris.
Through the chair, they'd be subject to a violation and penalty under the ordinance.
So even if they have not registered yet as a short-term rental, they're still liable for?
Subject to every day constituting a separate violation and subject to the penalties prescribed in the ordinance.
And if I might add to that, so the way that we approach code enforcement is we would like people to be in compliance with the ordinance. So if we were to find out that there was a short-term rental, we would not immediately issue a violation. We would give them, just for the benefit of anyone watching, the opportunity to turn in their required forms and fees and things before any violations were issued.
Right, yeah, I'm not out to get people. The point of the legislation is to have compliance, not to rack up tickets. So one is, let's see, 130-187A4, that's the noise ordinance must be posted. Do we think the noise ordinance, as it is written, is sufficient for our needs to be enforced, or does it need any modifications?
So again, I think I would refer to Attorney Chris or perhaps even Chief Kane because they deal a lot with the noise complaints.
I will defer a little bit, Attorney Chris, to, I think anything can be clarified. By and large, it works, so unless you disagree, Dan?
Sorry about that, distracting, but through the chair, you know, I think the current ordinance is a starting point. I think that it may be an area that should be reviewed with respect to a more precise objective standards that would require certain different consideration regarding equipment, but it is currently more of a reasonable person threshold, which two reasonable people could disagree on what that level is. So that's something that potentially could be revisited and studied.
Okay. That is something I would be interested in us looking at, is that, seems like that's...
Let me make sure I understand. Are we talking about basically how to implement a bad apple? Because like Kristen's point, we have short-term rentals, the majority of which are fine. We're talking about how do we deal with the bad apples, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about, so.
And this would not, I'm sorry. This would not be specific to short-term rentals, this is specific to all of our residents and visitors.
Mr. Geisner?
I just, I just want to point out, putting a standard in place where you have actual decibel levels in there is going to create a whole, I'm not saying don't do it, let me just be clear, but it creates a whole nother level of issue for public safety. We're already dealing with the calls about parking. What you're going to, what's going to be required is we're going to have to have at least a decibel meter, and they're going to get called out to go measure the decibels at the property line. I'm just, we can study it, I would just urge caution on going down that path.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, you know, if, I don't know what the answer, you know, I asked why, can the noise ordinance be better because I don't know where it can go and what it should be, but if there are recommendations, and some of it would be, how well can we actually enforce this? You know, if it becomes onerous, then yeah, we have to come up with something else, but I would be interested in exploring this more. In the context of making sure we can, in this case, deal with the bad apples, I don't think this is a widespread problem, so we do have to weigh it with other priorities as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Kristen, can we, or Attorney Chris, so much of short-term rentals goes back to the ad, like how the property is described. So speaking, hopefully for everyone, we don't want party houses in ads for Berkeley. Is there anything that we can do to ensure that landlords are not advertising party homes? Like, hey, come, come, come have a weekend rager, stuff like that?
So one of the things we're putting in place is limiting the number of occupants for sleeping areas, but in all honesty, it's really difficult to write a zoning or city code definition for a party home. And I'll ask maybe Attorney Chris to weigh in, too, but no, unless we have a definition that's legally defensible, there's nothing that we can compare it against.
Through your chair, I'd agree. I mean, there's, the ordinance is designed to control and encourage a certain type of conduct, and there's consequences for those who don't adhere to the ordinance, but I think the messaging is more problematic as to what people can say as to how they wish to frame their advertising. Certainly, I think the city can maybe encourage that, but I don't think that's something that should be in the ordinance.
Councilmember Baker?
Thanks, yeah, just one last thought. What I appreciate about this conversation around the noise ordinance and things is to, A, learn more about what is reasonable and what we can do and enforceable, and I think if it less is going after the bad apples, it's just providing the good apples with additional guidance on what they need to do to stay good apples, you know, so. And then, of course, to your point, if somebody is noticeably over any of those lines, then we have the machinery in place to help them see the, what they can do to regain their standing. So that's just how I'm thinking about it, and if we were to move forward with some kind of, at least a study session on the noise ordinance to understand what we can do and what would be cost prohibitive or resource prohibitive, I'd welcome that insight.
Pulling together some sample ordinances is not an issue. We can certainly do some research.
And just to be clear, we're not sitting here considering this because of the good apples. I appreciate your, you know, because you always are looking at the best, you are, but I just want to orient us into the moment that we're here, and it's not because of the good apples. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, now going on to item 13, property owners may be held liable for violations of the City of Berkeley code of ordinances. That reads a little ambiguously to me. What's the trigger that holds them liable? You know, if the renter does a violation, are they also potentially liable? Is that what this is saying, or is it something else?
So we did have one instance at one short-term rental where a property owner was ticketed for violations that happened when that property owner was there and the tenants were there as well. So that's one example. I believe it was a noise violation, but Chief Kane could speak to that one, too. I'm going to ask City Attorney Chris to weigh in on this one.
That language is not holding the property owner responsible when they're not there in that scenario. All of the criteria above 13, which is required of the short-term rental unit for the, if they're renting to more than the number of bedrooms would allow in the ordinance, that would be a violation that they could be held responsible for, but not for the conduct of a renter when they're absent from the premises.
Okay. I'm not sure what 13 adds then because there, any one is always liable for violations of the ordinance, so. And if we're fine with it, I'm fine one way or the other. Two other small issues or requests. We have a disclosure for putting the noise ordinance inside. I'd like also if we just said the no parking 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., so that people are aware that you've got to get the cars off the street overnight. And then number eight talks about storing the garbage in the rear. I think the intent is just making it so it's not visible from the front. That could be inside a garage, inside of some other enclosure, so instead of saying in the rear, just saying not visible from the street. So those would be two proposed changes that I would suggest for the second reading.
Okay.
And I have a question. It's mentioned here that the city's noise ordinance must be posted inside the short-term rental along with occupancy. Is there a way that not only is it posted inside the rental, but the renter must sign, I see it, I read it, here's my signature? And could that potentially, could we require it, and could it potentially be done on the leasing websites that are used? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
So there's a couple issues with that. One, we are not able to check the address on the leasing websites because we cannot see these properties by address, so that's one issue. And then, secondly, while I understand the intent of that, and that makes a lot of sense, that would, in theory, require us to check every three-day, let's say, rental agreement and have them submitted, and I don't know how our department would stay on top of that.
Yeah, I don't want to do that if that, because why ask for it if it can't be done, right? So I was just thinking about, you know, a level or a layer, another layer of accountability.
And that's what we tried to get to by posting the noise ordinance inside. We were thinking along those same lines, but trying to think of, how can we accomplish this in a way that we can do as part of regular inspections and without having access to the addresses of these, necessarily the addresses of these rentals on the websites.
And then a rental, a short-term rental, is not, they could not purchase the annual parking pass, correct?
So a short-term rental, they could theoretically purchase an annual parking pass because they can with that address, but they would need to meet one of the hardships, and they would also need to have two on-street or off-street parking spaces. So I'm really, I can't wrap my head around what hardship they would meet if they have two off-street parking spaces. They're not going to have extra drivers or anything like that, so.
Oh, corner, potentially.
We can check and make sure there'd be no conflicts there, but I would think that because we have in here that a rental has to have two off-street parking spaces, that wouldn't become an issue, but we'll make sure. That's a really good point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other? Councilmember Henan?
I think, building off your idea of, you know, each renter signs that they saw this, and it's like a logbook that's kept at the address, and we don't go out to look at it unless there is a problem. And then we ask for, show us the proof, show us the evidence that you've been complying with this, so then we know whether, you know, whether that has been happening. So we don't have to go out each time, each rental, but only when there's a problem.
So if we were to go down that road, I would suggest that it be something along the lines of that there's a book or a log or whatever it happens to be, but we would not have the ability to make sure every single renter signed it. We would just need evidence that there is such a document or a book. So I just want council to be aware of that. We couldn't make sure... So I just want council to be aware of that. We couldn't make sure every single person or, or group that rented the house signed this book, but we could confirm that, that it does exist and is in the house.
And would that need to be for every property, for every landlord or just the short-term?
It could be just for short-term rentals. But I mean, you could have renters that don't sign it or a landlord that doesn't make sure every single renter signs it and we won't have access to know when the home is rented out and when it is not.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. I certainly think that's worth some study. I'm concerned from like a privacy perspective, like, you know, if I'm, you know, John Smith was here and then Sally Sue and then Billy Bob, you know, kind of knowing other people's names and things. I'm just not sure if that's a, an issue that we'd want to entertain. I like the sentiment. Maybe there's another way to approach it to kind of get something, some kind of a record without at least asking or folks to, to give out personal information as a renter.
Yeah, I was just really coming from a place of, you know, yep, I saw this, I read it, I see your parking, I see the noise, I see. And then I'm gonna either comply or not, but I've seen what you're asking of me. Councilmember Alani.
I just, I don't want to see us over-engineer the process, which I'm concerned, like the guidebooks, all of that. I think we need to focus on, like, is it posted? Is, you know, what we're asking for in this draft ordinance there? And then if there are violations, that we're just following through with the next steps of what would happen as a consequence for violating it versus trying to create a process that we can't always monitor. And then I worry if we create a process we can't monitor and then there is something that wasn't adhered to, it now creates a loophole legally that someone can say, oh, well, you didn't do that over there for that short-term rental, but you're doing it to me. And I would just rather keep it simple, focus on, I mean, it's 2024. You've probably stayed in a hotel or a short-term rental before. And the vast majority of people know it's expected out of them and they do it without fail. And so I think we just need to stick with, these are the rules and if you don't follow them, now we have consequences and we work with that tenant or that landlord or the tenants at the time of violation.
Okay, I'm gonna open this up to public comment now. Thank you, Ms. Kaplansky.
Greg DeGrasse, Bacon Avenue. I didn't intend to talk about this, but sitting back there, listening to you, I would say it only takes one and it doesn't have to be this week or next month. It can be in five years because that's the ordinance you're putting in place. And I didn't call the police on my neighbor, but I couldn't get the people to hear me. And when the police showed up, they couldn't hear him up on the upper deck. They couldn't get in the building. It was a four-story condo building. And so it only takes one, and if you're living next to it, and we had one in my general neighborhood, but not in my block. It was completely disruptive to that block. No place to park for people that came home late. No, the noise ordinance didn't work, the nuisance ordinance didn't work, and the owner was in the house. And it was a party house, but it was his house. It could be a rental, long-term rental with roommates that like to have parties. And so I think one of the things, if you haven't looked at it, that you should look at is frequency of complaints. And how might you codify frequency of complaints to the point that the city has the opportunity for early termination of the permit or the license? You know, X number of violations of one kind or another in a six-month period. Everybody's gonna have parties and I'm not saying they shouldn't have that opportunity, but you don't want to have to be dealing with it every other week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item?
Hi, Nick Fulmer. I live at 2971 Cumberland here in Berkeley.
Yeah.
Thanks. I haven't spoke like this since Cub Scouts. Mayor Dean and council members, fellow residents of Berkeley that came before you today with concerns about short-term rentals in our community. This is an issue of growing importance as what began as just one rental down the street is now expanding with another just around the corner. And there's also an increasing awareness in our communities about this problem. While some claim they benefit our economy, and that's another thing I haven't heard is, again, like maybe something in the rule about an increase in taxes on those short-term rentals because they're competing against hotels. The reality is that the negatively impact on our neighborhoods and affordable housing stock. As a family man with a young child and a member of the Army Reserve who is sometimes called up for duty and asked to leave my family, I've unfortunately experienced nosey, noisy parties at all hours, strangers mistaking my home for a rental, which I think I sent you all in a, in a picture one day with my wife and 17-month-old son, a home alone. And I've never really needed to purchase a security system in all my years so far for a home. That wasn't until a short-term rental was started next to my home, forced me to install systems, increase the security and safety of my family and to document nuisances that have occurred since the short-term rentals opening. Other residents have shared similar stories, I'm sure, with you all. I understand the desire not to ban them outright. However, inaction is not serving residents either. I urge the council to establish clear rules and oversight, limit the number of days per year, for instance, especially during holidays. Increase taxes, offset some of these neighborhood disturbances that we can then maybe hire more public safety for those bad apples. Require hosts to take more responsibility for their guests through arrival policies, noise restrictions and fines for violations and conduct regular reviews before listings can operate. Residents deserve secure, affordable housing in stable communities. Short-term rentals as they operate today threaten that. I ask that we work to establish management and not continue leaving residents like myself, who sometimes have to leave their families, dealing with these very real safety concerns and those absence. I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge also the hard work of this council and city staff. I, I want to thank the mayor and several council members who did reach out to me, discuss my concerns on the issue. Berkeley has truly been a wonderful place for my family to settle down and start our lives together since 2021. The community and the neighbors that we have found here made an easy choice over other options within the community. I thank you all for your time, considerations for this important issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer and for your service.
Hi, Sandy Porter. I live at 2993 Cumberland, one house away from Nick. You say that the noise variance in the house, it doesn't matter what it is, if they're playing rap with a boom, boom, boom beat, I can hear it. And if I go outside and ask them to turn it down, they don't turn it down. I've found ways to make them turn it down, but I shouldn't have to do that. I had, I did call the person that owns a house something inappropriate and the police came over. And I complained because whenever we called them out, nothing's done. It's like a slap on the hand. I had called them recently about some girls in the pool screaming at 12:30 at night. They came out. But when the, when the police came over to reprimand me, I had mentioned that. And they informed me that those people pay good money to stay there and they should be able to be as loud as they want anytime they want, which did not make me happy. I don't know what you can do, but the other gentleman who said noise ordinances don't work, this place can sleep 11 according to Berkeley, I guess now 10. And it's 10 feet from my house, 10 feet from Nick's house. And it's, it's a nuisance. It is a party house. There have been a few people that have been okay there, but for the most part, it's a party house and nothing seems to be done about it.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments on this and, oh, I'm sorry.
Aubrey Roberts, I'm a lifetime resident. I had a couple of family members who had taken a short-term rental here just over the Dream Cruise. And my only comment is more of a question to consider is how exactly are we sort of really distinguishing the use of long, short-term rentals versus like, you know, just normal residential use? Because what's the true distinction between, say, a short-term rental and, say, just normal resident having friends, family, family friends over for like, you know, a weekend? And I've also have a, from what I could gather from the talk of this, that like, you know, there is a question of like, you know, to what degree you am a, hold renters versus actual property owners responsible, especially if property owners are off-site. This is gonna sound a little bit, I suppose, maybe even cruel or authoritarian, but I don't think there's any problem with bring the hammer down on property owners, especially since out of like, everybody in that equation, they would have like, you know, the most stake in making sure nothing's going wrong. So, and I remember hearing the idea about like over-engineering a solution to the problem. And I honestly feel that's a valid point because I suppose in terms of like legal speak as well as like, you know, just the general considerations, we can't like one-to-one consider this idea of short-term rentals, like, you know, strictly the same as a residential use. But I think we can cut it pretty close because even though like, again, like what would really separate, like, you know, people from out of town renting something versus people from out of town just coming in to visit, like, you know, on the recognizance of the current owner. Even in those informal sort of uses, like, you know, I'm sure maybe money or favors are like, you know, have changed hands. So like, you know, this is just sort of a more commercialized version of something and it happens all the time. So like, you know, we, I think we really just have to like slightly expand on how we would handle this in a normal residential situation and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for public comment on this agenda item. Closing public comments. Any further questions or discussion from council? Mr. Geiser.
One thing I'd like to point out that maybe we want to add to this, I was just asking Director Kaplansky. In our nuisance ordinance, it does, I'm gonna use my words. I don't think this is what the ordinance is written. But basically it has in there quiet hours from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. and that's in our ordinance now. Perhaps we want to require that that is posted in the domicile as well, that it clearly says quiet hours are 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Now, one other thing I want to just note on that, as, as staff has spent a lot of time talking through this, the police department, for them to write a ticket, it has to be observed by the police department. And there are a lot of times that when we show up, it's already been rectified. Additionally, just as we would do with any other citizen in the community, as I think Director Kaplansky pointed out earlier, compliance is what we're going for. And it's unfortunate with this property, we continue to have the issue. But generally, when we get called on a complaint, it's, hey, did you know this? Turn it down, be respectful of your neighbors, what have you. Usually we have compliance right away and it's not an issue. So perhaps posting that might be just an additional little measure that puts it out there.
Yeah, I don't think that could hurt. Thank you for that. Anyone else?
I do want to say one more thing.
We've, I, public comments are closed. You can email us with further comments. Thank you. Councilmember Henon.
One thing I'm wondering, I don't know, I don't know the answer to this. If, you know, what's the average stay for the non-problematic people? What's the average stay for the party house? The party house, if they're just coming one night and then leaving, but most people stay two or more nights, are we able to put a two-night minimum? Are we able to legislate that? And then that makes it less attractive, you know, makes it more expensive for the party house use. But if there aren't many other one-night uses, then it doesn't impact other people. I don't, I just don't know the answer to that, but, yeah, open it up.
Councilmember Black.
I think we have to firmly just say, party houses are the problem. We don't want them here and then work with our landlords to say like, hey, you want to have short, we, we are as a landlord, full disclosure, as, as a Berkeley landlord, I have the, we have the benefit. And the reason why short-term rentals are so attractive here is for their short, mid, long-term rentals, not to go too far down a rabbit hole. We are less than a mile away from a Level 1 trauma center. So people come in and out of there, so those are the, we have a lot of physicians and, and people who work it down the street who are here for a short amount of time. Auto executives, people who travel around the world, they go someplace, they're there for a short amount of time to do their work, they're in, they're out. I don't want to dissuade those people from coming to our great community. I think we have to, and I don't know legally, Dan, how we do it. Chief, would you agree that party houses and party homes and party rentals and party people are the problem? Okay, in this particular case, so then let's, can we segment to that? Because I, to Councilmember Valani's point, like we're going all around and really it's like our, our issue is these people in these houses. So Kristin, Chief, Dan, is there a way that we can legally do that without it being disruptive to the rest of our renters?
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we talked as a staff about this in circles because we agree that that is the problem. That when these houses are advertised and, and held as party houses, those are, those are the ones that are causing the issue. And really I should say the one that's causing the issue. But, but we really struggled with how to define what a party house is, one. To Councilmembers Henon, Henon's point, we talked about looking at number of days and things, but then how do we get the records from the different services that advertise these and list these to figure out how many days people are staying? And in, you know, overview and look at how the different communities across the state are regulating these, a lot of times they're looking at them from a housing affordability point, but as a party house thing secondarily. And I don't know that anyone's come up with that answer yet. Sorry. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Just that the, the concern on the party house, it's got to be fact-specific. And the goal is to have a regulatory scheme that is clear enough for public safety to, if they determine that a violation exists, actually issue a citation, which may not be immediate enough for an adjacent property owner, but hopefully will send a message over time to to the people that are offending and violating the, the threshold. But this is the first step towards achieving that. But again, it's, it's, it's got to be fact-specific to hold them accountable.
So then Friday night, so okay, this, this particular home, is this, this, the pool is there, right?
The home, yes.
So we're talking about Friday night, Saturday night, hey, we got a pool, come, you know, there, so they are, they're partying, the music is loud. I don't know if I can speak to our audience since they, but is that the rap music? I mean, I like rap music. It's not all bad, but that's a separate, separate conversation. I agree. And at, and at 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, my, my primary concern to Mr. Fulmer, he had an inebriated person show up at his home. I, that would not work well at, at my house as a fellow member of the military and as a gun owner. You do not want to be inebriated on my front porch at 2:00 in the morning. That's bad. So there's a safety element in there as well. So again, I'm just, it seems like, and I don't, I don't want our staff going through ads and Airbnb and things like that, but I just, I feel like there should be a shortcut to the issue. And maybe the council member Henon's, you know, if, if it's a preponderance of Friday, Saturday nights, and I mean, maybe we ask the neighbors, are we talking about Friday, Saturday night all week long?
And councilman, I'm sure that public safety has also informed the residents, call public safety and, and they will come out. And that needs to happen. I might, it's, I'm not sure if it's happening on every occasion. It sounded like there's a frustration level, but that is the recourse that is to contact public safety.
Okay, Mr. Geiser.
So we got to keep this conversation up here.
Correct.
For one, that's where we're at. So, we gotta keep this conversation up here, for one, that's where we're at. Number two, I hear there is interest in trying to get more at the issue. I think we've put forth our best first guess, based on the research and the conversations we've done thus far. My suggestion would be, if the council feels we've got to start to move forward, let's get the first reading done. I hear the conversation around party houses. We have not found good examples that have addressed it, but between the first reading and the second reading, let us do one more stab at Googling and looking in, reaching out to colleagues, and let's see what else we can find, and we can bring that back for further conversation, possibly in attorney-client, depending on the nature of what we find or don't find.
I would also add Jen Rigterink from the MML, she's the person on this stuff. So, Councilmember Vlani.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Dean, and I'll try to be brief here, is, and perhaps this is just many, many years in HR, is, at an, at a company, you write a policy, a procedure, a code of conduct, whatever it might be, this is the expectation. I can tell you, I have written codes of conduct about stuff that you would never expect that you would have to write a code of conduct about in a workplace, but I did. It's not so much, I think we're spending too much time trying to define what a party house is, because we're gonna spend all this time defining what a party house is, and then six months down the road, it's gonna be something different. What I think they've done a really great job of is setting expectations of this is what you need to do and how you must comply to be a short-term rental. Where I would like to see us move now is to be crystal clear in what happens when you are not compliant. So, to some of the comments, is there a way that we can, just like in a workplace, your first violation of a code of conduct, it might be a verbal warning, and then it's gonna be an email from your boss, and then it's gonna be, you know, a more formal write-up, things like that. Can we set out, like, if you have a violation of any of things, it's in here, whether it's not passing an inspection, whether it's, you know, noise ordinance violations, multiple calls to public safety, however we wanted to find that, as is in the ordinance, to say, this is what happens the first time, this is what happens the second time, by the third time, three strikes, you're out, goodbye, you're not a rental anymore. Like, I, I just think we're spending too much time defining what could be versus just how we respond, so that you all have the tools to do that, cuz it feels like that's where the gap is right now, that we can talk around it, but there's not a lot of action that anyone can take, and I feel like that's where we need to move towards.
Mr. Campolansky.
Uh, one thing that I think it's important to remember, and I appreciate those comments, Councilmember Vlani, is that there is a distinction between a complaint and a violation.
Correct.
So, as has been said several times here, someone could call and complain, and if the music isn't loud when public safety gets there, it's not a violation, it's a complaint. So when we're looking at, at something like that, we will be living in the world of violations, not necessarily complaints.
And that's an important distinction, thank you for pointing that out, and thank you, Councilmember Vlani. Uh, Councilmember Henon.
Yeah, and I think I'm reiterating the same thing, we have an issue where if the renter has a violation, they follow all of these, but then every renter, every night is too loud, we need a way for that owner to be held accountable eventually, because they are essentially enabling the behavior. But, you know, it isn't sufficient to, when there is literally a different person every night, they get one violation, okay, they move on, and the neighbors, it is racking up to them over and over again, so there needs to be something, some mechanism that eventually the owner is held accountable.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, so, what we have before us, we're gonna vote on this tonight with the understanding that there will be more investigation into this further, seeing, given the suggestions we've received tonight, how we can then tweak it before the second reading, is that, Mr. Geinzer?
Um, that's correct, and if, if I, if I heard everything right, we're going to add the required, the posting of the quiet hours, we're going to look again at teeth, I guess is how I'm gonna summarize it. I, I hear the comments on the party, I wanna look one more time, but I totally agree with, with what's been said, and Director Campolansky on, it will have to be a violation. The other thing that we're gonna wanna have to, that we're gonna wanna look at is what we put in place, if that has impacts outside of short-term rentals, because I could see a whole other, different can of worms getting opened up, depending on where we go with this, so, did I miss anything?
Parking.
Oh, the parking, yes. Any more clarification you need?
No, but I will also add, change the trash and debris and recycling to not visible from the street, not from behind the rear.
Anything else?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say too, when it comes to violation, just because a violation is issued does not mean they're guilty either, it would have to be, they would have to be either plead guilty or be found guilty in court, just writing a ticket is not good enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we've been through all kinds of circles.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O-0824.
Vlani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-8124, matter of accepting the quarter ended June 30th, 2024, budget to actual report.
Is there a motion to approve M-8124?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protim Gavin with support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, real brief, we have our finance director here, Carl Johnson, to walk us through the next few items, staff will be here to support him as necessary. Our first item tonight is a standard item that we bring forward, this one always comes a little later in the year, because this is when we're closing our books and preparing for audit, and Carl will be walking you through this report. Typically, I'd throw this on consent, but there's some items that Carl's been working on, and we've had some misinformation out there that we're gonna try and walk through and correct, and I believe we're doing that on this item, and then we'll talk more about the rollover amendments, which is also a standard process, we'll talk about that one next. So with that, Carl?
Thank you. Good evening. City manager said I only get an hour or two, so, I wanna be as energetic as Mike, but I don't think that's ever gonna happen, so, but I do get excited about the numbers, so, as, as he pointed out, the, these are quarterly per the charter, I'm supposed to update you quarterly on what's going on, and so the reason this isn't the normal 30 days after year-end is, it is fiscal year-end, and the accounting rules require us to literally act like we quit business on June 30. So every invoice that comes in afterwards, if it relates to June, I have to put it back into June, and if it was half of June and half of July, I literally have to split it in half. If there's a payroll that four days is last year and six days is this year, I have to break it in half and stuff, so it takes a little while to get, to get the numbers there. So it is a process, our audit actually started this morning, this was prepared a week ago, I waited till the very last minute, cuz nothing worse than I give you a report and the audit is substantially different. So the, the goal was to get this as accurate as it can, so the closer it matches our annual audit. So just wanna cut, touch on a couple of the significant funds, so first and foremost, our general fund, our general operating fund, on page, let's see here, it's 19, if you look there on the very bottom corner, it says, we ended the year in the general fund with a 1.1112, $1,112,000 surplus. Holy smokes, we had a great year, right? There's always a story behind it, you know, the, the numbers guys always have a story once upon a time. So, the, the reason that we'd like to present this as well is, again, to get the facts on this. So, our revenues for the year were about $1,004,000 less than we, than our amended budget. Why were they $1,004,000 less? Because there was $1,004,000 in grant revenue related to the HVAC that we hadn't received yet. Outside of that, we were literally right on, and again, the reason we haven't received it is, that project really didn't kick off till June of this past year, so we only have about $170,000 worth of HVAC expenses in here, and that project, as you know, is like $2.7 million, so, there's a, only a-
A small amount of grant revenue in here, all of which will be into next fiscal year. If you exclude the grant revenue related to it and the related grant expenses, because we had budgeted $1.8 million for the grant expenses, we're gonna end up about $300,000 to the good. And if you recall, the last quarterly amendment, that was my guess as to where we're gonna be, uh, right sometimes. Our amended budget was about $162,000, so I think we're gonna be better off than we were, than we originally estimated, so that's a great thing. The other side of that is, as you know, the HVAC project itself, we had budgeted $1,009,400, and the quotes that we have are somewhere in the neighborhood of $262,700. So that surplus, obviously, when we give it to next fiscal year, the current fiscal year we're in, we'll roll some of that into, to next year. So, while we're doing very well, we're sound financially, we're not flushed by any means, because we have a huge list of capital needs and other needs that is well in excess of this $300,000 that we have here. So, again, ended the year great, you know, we didn't dip into fund balance, we increased fund balance, and again, good results there. Major local infrastructure fund-
Carl, real quick, before you go on to that, one other reason, at least in most municipalities I've ever worked with, a lot of times when we see a surplus at the end of the year, it's due to those vacancies that we have throughout the year, because when somebody leaves, there is a gap when we are not paying a salary, and that adds up, especially when you have a community of our size with the number of employees that we have. So, just wanna point that out, typically another reason why you'll see a surplus, cuz we budget, you, you have to budget, worst case, as if everybody is staffed.
Another key part of that before we leave the general fund too, is the next item on our agenda is the rollover. So, again, that takes into consideration that HVAC project that we talked about, we budgeted it for $1,008,000. Guess what, we've signed the contract, it's done, it's going to happen, but our budgets expire at the end of the fiscal year, so they need to be rebudgeted. So this favorable variance that we have here is just gonna be rolled into next year and eaten up.
Sure.
So the true surplus that you ended the year with was that $300,000 number, not the $1,000,000 number, and that's what the next item really relates to. It's not just the HVAC, we have trucks on order that have been on order for years and years and years, thank you, supply chain issues, you know, projects going on, the clerk's office moved, any of those kind of contracts that we have commitments for that we hadn't finished by June 30, that we're still on the hook for, those are what the rollover amendments are, and that's what the next item is on there, so just keep those in mind as well. The major local infrastructure funds, those have increased activity, so again, that's the lead line replacement, the re-paving related to it, a lot of concrete paving, we've done a ton of work, we call it concrete panel replacements during the past year, so the work, the expenditures we're putting into our major and local streets is substantial, we continue to put basically every dime we can into those. The last one I just wanted to touch on is the water and sewer fund, so if you look up page 53, so, as we talked about, it's really not fund balance in the water and sewer fund, the water sewer fund should be measured based on cash flow, and what you have before you is, on a cash flow basis, before we start doing all those crazy accounting things, like removing debts and removing fixed assets and those kind of things. They don't wanna hear me. I wore it out.
So let me repeat all that. Heck no. So, what you have before you, you can see there, the water and sewer fund ended with positive cash flow of $333,000. So a lot of the discussion lately has been on the accounting for the inter-fund borrowing last year between the water and sewer fund and the, and the general fund, which is really just an accounting function of the, there was a cash flow need at the end of the fiscal year, and the accounting regs required it to be disclosed the way it was. So, we've had discussions with Department of Treasury, we, we've had discussions with our auditors, the financial statements that were disclosed last year were 100% correct, except for one sentence was missed in a footnote, so again, not the numbers-wise, in the footnotes, and that one sentence should have said, there was a borrowing between the general fund and the water and sewer fund for cash flow purposes. That was what the Department of Treasury said, yes, that looks like it's not there, they reached out to the auditors and said, you should make a note for that for future years to make sure that sentence gets included in there. There's no issue with the audit report, there was no letter sent to us, there was no, nothing, they said it's a very common error that the auditors miss per se, but again, all of this hoopla that's been, been out there over basically a sentence. If you recall, during the budget meetings, as well as the quarterly amendments, I said the inter-fund borrowing has already been taking place, what happened was the allocation of the invoices related to the lead line replacements and the related pavings, that allocation at the end of last year wasn't exactly the way it should have been, so all of that was fixed by me months and months ago, and so that's gone. So, the financial statements that I turned over to the auditors this morning has positive cash flow, it's a whopping $80,000.
The new auditor, correct?
To our new auditors, yes, to our brand-new auditors, I think we have a whopping $80,000 to the good, but we do have positive cash flow, positive cash at the end of the fiscal year, there's no borrowings, the fund was balanced, and again, on a cash flow basis, we had $333,000. As we know, this is one of our biggest areas of concern, because we have that unfunded mandate of the lead lines, so on an annual basis, we're gonna continue to invest every dime we have into replacing those lead lines as required, but the reality is, we don't have the funding for it. We've raised the rates each of the past years, 10% each of the past two years, and there's no end in sight really, as far as that goes. So, we actually had to do, to take a hiatus in this current fiscal year of not, of stopping basically what we have, and then starting up again in the '24, '25 fiscal year, so that we can catch up on a cash flow basis and those kind of things. So, the, this report is gonna be pretty close to what the actual audit report is, and again, cuz this was done a week ago, we are in good financial conditions, there's no issues on the state-wise, there's no issues anywhere, again, this is just so you can see on a line and a basis for every fund of the city that we have, where the, where
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Might be a record time.
Yeah, any questions from council or comments? Councilmember Henon?
I've kept hearing we're hiding the money, where's the money hidden? Where's the water money hidden? There's no money hidden.
Exactly, there's, if we're hiding the money, the whole issue that was, it was negative, so where was, where was that hidden? It was, it was the, it was an allocation issue between the street funds, the infrastructure fund, and the water and sewer issue. That's, from an accounting standpoint, that's why it was negative. The finance department should have corrected that before we went to audit last year.
Yeah, so we had a mistake last year from previous finance, not, not very material one, but one missing sentence in the audit, a very common mistake, and there's been no other issues, there's nothing else.
Correct. Department of Treasury said that they wouldn't have done anything unless someone reached out to them and said, you know, hey, what about this? And then they looked at the note to see, cuz that usually describes what they did. Everything else in the, in the financial thing was perfectly disclosed, but then note wasn't there, and so that's, they did a poor job conveying that that was the only issue that they had.
Okay, thank you.
So much to do about nothing.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments or, oh, yes?
Just the, the motion, I see that it's, it proposes to accept the quarter ended June 30, 2023, should that be 2024?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Public input on this agenda item.
Great, you're Ross. First, I wanna thank you for comparing these reports, because I haven't seen them since I've been here, and I had a meeting before you came to town with some of the council members, and the question was asked, how often do you see quarterly reports? And one of the one council members said, I don't remember the last time I've seen a quarterly report. So that's some of the, that's just some, I'm not gonna get, I don't have time to get into the details, but there's a lot that went on before you arrived, there's a lot that went on before our interim city manager arrived, there's been a lot of turnover, three finance directors, one last for a month, so it's not all on you, I mean, there's a lot going on. So this is a step forward, but it's just the first step. And, and I think this needs to be taken into perspective. What you said a few minutes ago, and that Mayor, you said, much to do about nothing, what I heard a couple minutes ago about the explanation and- What I heard a couple minutes ago about the explanation and the allocation issues on the 1.6 million could have solved this problem a long time ago, but it never hurt. I never saw it, I never got a response, and there's been a lack of, and so here we are tonight, we finally get an explanation of what caused it. What caused the overspending of 1.6 million was the latest. But my concern is, you said in the cover memo here, he has said that there is a delay in some of the work in order to get the cash, to deal with the negative cash. If I've misspoken, I'll let him correct me. So I still am confused, why were you, why were delaying work this year in order to make up for the cash deficit in prior years? And that, that concerns me. I hope that we do not have this problem yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Any other discussion or questions from council? Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, we did talk about this nine months ago, so if people don't want to listen, I don't know what we can do about that.
Anything else? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 8124.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Bellani.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M 8224, matter of authorizing the rollover amendment for the 2024-25 budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve M 8224?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Geinser.
I would just say again, it's not uncommon that I would normally put something like this on consent, but particularly the example that was given earlier on the HVAC, I mean, there's a couple pretty decent-sized numbers and projects that are outstanding, so we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for Carl to present on this and make sure that you all had an opportunity to ask any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so briefly, what you see on the attached resolution, those are the capital accounts that were left over, there's actually five of them in the general fund there. So the original, you see the budget there at 2424, that is the final amended budget amount, and then the actual at 63024, that is actual expenditures to date. So all we're literally talking about is the unspent capital that was previously budgeted, rolling that over to the next year. And again, the big one there, that citywide projects, that's the HVAC. So you see the budget there, 19, we had 290,000. But to offset that is the revenue on top, the federal sources, so that is the balance of the grant revenue as well. So we thought we were getting a million seven, we'd only received 350 today. So the revenue gets rolled over as well, for a net of the 575. The other one was in recreation, there was a couple capital items in recreation as well, there was 80,000 budgeted, and some of that was with the turnover within the department, they didn't get the stuff, they got it ordered late and it wasn't received till after the year. And so there's 80,000 that was rolled over in recreation. Again, favorable results in the audit report in June 24, but those items are coming in and need to be rebudgeted in the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
And that's all this.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm closing public comments. I'm going to guess there's no other discussion from council. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 8224.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Bellani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate your work on this. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Discussion matter of receiving a solid waste fund update in discussing yard waste, bag tag fees, and the brush cleanup program.
Mr. Geinser.
Are you guys doing a motion first?
No, it's a discussion.
Oh, right. Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to start with a brief introduction here, and then I'm going to ask Carl to get into more of the details as council may be interested in. I think as all of you know, you've been through multiple budget cycles, a budget is exactly that, it's a cycle. We're ongoing, we're looking at the numbers, we're reviewing programs, we're looking at revenues, expenses year-round. And when Carl and I first both got here, the bag tag program, or at least that's what we call it, and the brush program changes, we're still relatively new. These programs were put in place, these changes were made in part because the city was going through some budget uncertainty. And whenever you're going through a situation like that, especially in a time crunch, we're going to make decisions, because that's what you're all elected there to do, that's what we're hired here to do as professionals, is to make decisions based on the best information we have available. When these programs were created, ultimately, when you're adjust, or excuse me, when you're estimating a new revenue based on something you've never done before, you're going to estimate conservatively, because that's the responsible thing to do. Basically, what we have here is a year's worth of history with this program. As Carl is closing out the books and reviewing where we're at, cost versus revenues, he came to us and said, hey, this is something we should look at, because we all know this is a discussion that's been hot around the community, there's been a lot of accusations thrown around and what have you, and so we wanted to sit down and look at this very specifically. Essentially, what we found is, these revenues that were projected, were projected too low. No mistakes, it's just, I would have probably done the same thing. Real numbers have come in, we're evaluating this, we're talking with our deputy city manager about what it would look like to bring the brush program back, all in this context here. And most importantly, when we sat down to discuss this, we wanted to make sure we're discussing this based on a long-term decision, not short-term. So in other words, if we were going to bring this recommendation to you tonight, what would it take to ensure that that is a sustainable decision? Because what we don't want to keep doing is whiplash, because potentially what we're doing is, we're taking a new revenue away and bringing back a program that was just added and taken away last year. And what we don't want to do is keep putting our residents through whiplash. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carl to get into a little bit more of the details of what we found, particularly some of the assumptions that we all need to go into this understanding, we would need to follow and monitor on an annual basis throughout the budget process in order to make this, excuse me, this recommendation a reality. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carl.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. So the summary I put together really went back to 2017. Being, arriving here in January, I wanted to make sure, and I've been, sat through a couple meetings where, you know, this was the topic for some reason, and I wanted to make sure we dug into the facts and made sure that, spelled it out here, and as City Manager pointed out, don't like to, we want to give you the facts so that you can make a good decision based on the actual facts. So the, if you looked at this chart here, in 2017, the rubbish fund, the solid waste fund, had a fund balance of about $542,000. By the end of 2021, that had dropped to $156,000. So again, substantial increases in just three or four years. And the only reason that wasn't a lot worse was the city started moving expenditures out of the solid waste fund back into other funds of the city, back to the general fund and the water and sewer fund, et cetera. So charging less in those expenditures. Operating expenditures went from $449,000 in 2020 to $281,000 in 2023. So while the actual rubbish costs were going up, the solid waste costs were going up, the other costs just continued to be siphoned off and allocated to somewhere else, when eventually, we couldn't, it really couldn't be afforded by everywhere else, and that's where it ultimately came back to you for those decisions. A couple assumptions that were made back then at this same time as well, property tax revenue increases, on average, the two years before COVID, the average property tax increase was .4 and .8%, so less than 1% annual increases. So if you're looking at this in 2021, which is when, you know, the crisis really started in this fund, it was, holy smokes, property taxes are going nowhere, the owner, our only remedy is going to be in the fee area. Well, as you know, the last two years, property taxes have gone up 5%. I mean, that's, think about it, five times annually what the original assumption must have been way back when. The other assumption as well is the amount of revenue that would be collected from the tag program. The original budget that I saw was somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000, $160,000. Were over 200,000 for the year that just ended related to those tags, as well as the commercial fee. The commercial fee itself is over $200,000 as well. So substantial increases in revenues. The previous year, just to put it in perspective, the commercial, or the residential, the tag program brought in, well, there was no tag program, but our fees related to that were about $4,000, so it went from basically zero to the 200, and the commercial, we were only at about $29,000. So again, huge increases on those items right there by themselves. The other issue, the other significant assumption, as we looked going forward, we have a signed contract, a signed rubbish contract with Sakura, Sakura, yes, with Sakura through 2027 that guarantees us a 5% increase each of the next couple years. What happens after that? Who knows? But we do know that the trash haulers have gone from many to few, and that, that's some economic thing or whatever, says, supply and demand, we're anticipating a substantial increase in costs when the next contract comes up. In the neighborhood of 15% is what I assumed here, but it could be 20, it could be 25, it could be 30, we don't know. We're making a guess there. Again, that's 2027 when that contract expires. So we do know for the next few years, we're in good shape with that. The other thing these substantial increases in property taxes, as well as the new fees have done, is brought our fund balance back from 156,000, I'm guesstimating our fund balance at the end of this year will be more than $710,000 in that fund. So the highest it's been in, in many years. So what's fund balance for in this fund? Fund balance in this fund is for that 2027 increase that we don't know what it is. So say it's 40% increase in our fees, 40% increase could be as high as $400,000. That is the reserve for the unknown. And so how big do we need that reserve? And to me, I think we're at that point where 700 feels okay. You know, we're sitting here today, we know in the next two years we're good, but we don't know what's coming up, but that seems to be a decent number. So if we were to bring back, if we were to eliminate the tag program, reduce that $200,000, and consider just passing on the annual increase from our rubbish contracts, or with our existing residential, commercial fees that we have, if we just passed on the increase, the annual increase each year, that was the assumption I made in here. So we'll just match, if the rubbish price goes up 5%, we'll raise our fees 5%. All of which, though, has to come before you as part of the budget process to be approved on an annual basis, just like water and sewer fund. So this isn't an automatic thing, you always have the option to do it. But again, if you, if you were to do something like that, that was the key assumptions I made here, that we would just pass along that same increase annually and basically eliminate the tag program. And so what's that net us? By 30, by 2030, our fund balance should still be in the neighborhood of about $630,000, $640,000. So.
But you will notice it's starting to be in a deficit, that, so the further out that we get, we're going to need to keep an eye on that during the budget process.
Yeah. And again, a reasonable assumption of 3% for property taxes, what if we're at 5, or what if we're at 2? Again, this is not something that, we never look at this again, this is something we look at each and every year, and it should be part of our annual budget process. It should be one of those things we look at and say, this is what we want to do with the fees. And this is more of common, what we see everywhere else is, 2008 happened, our taxable values plummeted, property tax revenue used to be enough to cover the rubbish fees, and it's not. Most communities implemented a fee on top of property taxes, and so now it's just, every year, it's how much we're getting in taxes and how much do we adjust the fee? That's literally the model that we're looking at right there, and that's, would be determined on an annual basis. But the good news is, you have the opportunity now, if you so choose, I think we would be comfortable enough, looking out the next five years, that if you so chose to eliminate that program, I think we'd be, and did that annual increase as part of the budget process of, so for the next two years, it would be 5% we'd be looking at, just increase that accordingly, I think we would be comfortable enough looking out the next five years.
Thank you. Mr. Geinser.
The reason we're bringing this to you now is, not only because it's timely, it's the year-end, we're reviewing everything anyway, but it's from a communication standpoint, is if council feels that this is a direction you want to go with the budget process, we would prefer to start communicating that now.
Sure.
So we don't get people buying extra bag tags and stockpiling them or what have you. We've already been kind of communicating, look, we don't know what's going to happen next year, so don't, don't buy extras or what have you. We would also plan to implement this, again, keeping this as clean as possible. The tags were already going to be ending October, October 1st, I believe?
Yeah, October 1st would be.
October 1st is when the tags would end, which is when we get into actual, our other leaf season program, and when we start leaves up, excuse me, when we start yard waste back up in the spring, that's when we bring the chipper program back, should you decide to do that. So our ask, if you think you want to go that route, give us the direction via a motion, and we can start communicating things.
And Carl, these numbers did have the chipper out.
Yes, the chipper was added to my numbers as well, yes, I forgot.
On a bi-weekly basis.
Okay.
Anything else you want to add, Deputy City Manager?
I'm excited at the proposition of making this happen.
I'm sure you are.
I'd love for it to come back and just take care of the community. We're all about public service, and any way we can do that would be great.
Thank you.
And one last thing before we leave it, the cost in our current fiscal year is less than 6% that it was in 2020.
Oh.
So we talk about the other charges are all the costs within that fund, the overall cost within that fund is less than 6% than what it was five years ago. So again, because we were moving those other costs back to other funds, as opposed to leaving them there where they should have been all along, and just subsidizing it as it went along. So again, it was eye-opening to see that that truly was the case, so.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, discussion from council. Councilmember Baker.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. This is very encouraging, and I appreciate the focus of the funds to look at the past, the present, and the future, to understand as we make this kind of consideration here in a thoughtful way with data behind us here. You had mentioned the notion of the residential bag tags potentially ending, and so we'd want to communicate that, as you mentioned, so folks don't want to stock up. That would be halfway through the fiscal year, would there be any budget machinations to make those adjustments in the current fiscal year? And then the second question is, I've heard specific comments about the residential side, what can you comment on from the commercial side? Would that remain in place? Would that also be considered, or are we just talking residential at this point?
Commercial would stay in place.
Commercial would stay in place.
And in the report, let's see here, the costs that would be added to this current fiscal year, Carl, let me know if I get it wrong, 25,000 would be the add to the, to bring the brush cleanup back for those couple months remaining of the year, and it would be a loss of 70,000 in revenue from the bag tag program. Did I get that right?
That's correct. Yeah, the good news is, we had budgeted where we had thought a year ago, before we knew exactly where we're going to be. Our current budget's 120,000, and our actual last year was 200. So the number we're trying, we would have to reduce is only, started at 120, as opposed to 200, so.
And so the recommended motion, as you guys are continuing to, or as council continues to deliberate, we'd be asking for the permission to make the necessary budget amendments to reflect the impacts that Councilmember Baker brought up.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Henan.
So first, an observation, part of this is subject to headly rollback, and that's impacting some of the, some of the property tax and some of the decrease in revenue, correct?
Yeah, except for that 5 is a net 5, so even with our rollbacks, we still have realized the 5.
Okay.
So the, the assumptions going forward are more conservative, but they would take that into consideration, correct?
Um, do we, do these projections have any capital costs of any equipment we're going to have to replace? Is that built into this?
There is, we have capital cost budgeted for the current fiscal year, but nothing else after that. There was nothing in our current capital plan related to it. So as we get into revamping our capital CIP program and re-presenting it in the next budget process, so we hope. budget process, so we hope to revamp the whole process. To the extent there is capital that needs to be baked in, again, that's, we'll be looking long term. That's why the city manager, since he's been here, says, has said, we maybe need longer than three years for our budget. Maybe it's a five-year budget, maybe it's, because the capital plan is six years. But as of right now, in this, through 3030, there was no capital plan.
And the equipment that we do have for our leaf pickup and other items, we could maybe buy out of the general fund and rent through equipment rental if there's a piece of equipment that we, is a multi-use piece. We have some of our, like our leaf trucks or our garbage trucks. Right now, they're in real good shape. Use them a couple of months a year. I don't see us replacing them in the next five to seven years. Realistically, the cost of buying a new truck with a new chassis is $300,000, $400,000. We'd probably look to more of like a hook truck body, go on one of our swap loaders and do it through a rental.
And that's something to point out here, too. You know, I've been bragging about staff tonight, but I'm gonna do it again. I mean, this is the type of stuff that DPWs are more and more doing is trying to figure out how we can get multi-use out of.
Yes.
Equipment that we already own and these swap loaders give us that ability to buy an attachment versus a whole standalone vehicle. And that's what's reflected currently in this capital plan.
There's not many of those in the state, not a, not a Packer body.
Right.
It's pretty uncommon, but it's an uncommon usage. It's kind of.
So one, one concern I have here is if we, you know, we're not looking at any capital needs for five years, we're projecting out five years, we don't have potentially the savings, we suddenly have a cliff where now we have capital needs and haven't been reserving for that. So I think we need to make sure that that is covered here somehow, you know, saving up for the future. I want to make sure that going forward, we keep the solid waste fund self-sufficient and we don't have to subsidize it from outside. And whether that's purchases or rental in between our accounts. So is this there or do we need to make some estimates on what our cap, you know, start reserving additional capital for five years down the line?
If I can start on that, remember, we're, the question is relevant, I don't want to make it sound like it's not. More of this is going to have to happen during the budget process in, with the big picture of the budget as a whole. That being said, there's going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's going to be limits to what kind of capital we would put in here because it's to the solid waste. As Carl and Sean mentioned earlier, we're revamping the CIP, it's going to be a more inclusive process. As we identify those needs and bring them back in the budget, that would be a time where I think we would need to dive more into detail. Carl's gotten here a comfortable reserve that should something come up, I feel comfortable with it as of right now, but we're going to have to continue to monitor things. What else would we want to be monitoring here from a capital standpoint?
Well, just moving forward, the process that I will be implementing or recommending during the next budget cycle is like the fire truck. You can't have 000, 1.8 million dollars. You know, it's start putting money aside. So it's, it's baking more of that into the annual budget. So whether it's the surplus, what I love to do in general funds is this $300,000 extra that we have, that all goes away. You know, it goes way into a capital fund or a portion of it goes away to a capital fund. Same with this, if, say, I estimated 715, if we end this year at 750, why not 40,000 go into a capital reserve to start funding some of those kinds of things as well?
A capital reserve fund policy is probably something that would be worth you all looking at where the equipment that would, or the capital would be charged here, to Carl's point, whether it's a surplus or we are what, I don't know if it's the right accounting word, but we're funding a portion of our depreciation. So like if a vehicle depreciates by $10,000 that year, we're taking that, we're putting into a capital reserve. A lot of times you'll see that being done with roads or sidewalks or what have you. If you look in your audit, there's going to be a depreciation schedule and we might say 10% of depreciation we're going to set aside in this capital reserve each year. Something along those lines could certainly be looked at here.
Or at least having the plan, to your point, is this piece of equipment's going to be 400 grand, we're going to lease it. And we know our lease payment's going to be, it's a five-year lease and it's going to cost 60 grand or whatever. So bake the 60 grand into that three-year budget so that in year one, three years out, you start to get the 50 in there and know exactly where you are, those kinds of things. So it's either you get all the cash ahead of time or, you know, what is your plan? And again, for you to get, to know what the plan is and to bless the plan as part of the budget process.
Yes. I'm, I'm comfortable with us starting here and then, you know, as we look at the budget for next year and the capital improvements that we start to hone in and refine this, might find we're fine, might find we need to increase it a little more than expected, but we'll be able to, and it's always estimates, we're always working with the best data that we have available at the time. Two questions, just process questions on the chipper route when we bring it back. Is it going to be call in to schedule it like we have now or just like before when you just canvass the whole city?
What we have proposed is a bi-weekly pickup. We're all based on volumes, so whether I pick it up monthly or bi-weekly, we still have the generally the same volume. So on a bi-weekly pickup, it's less days to run the route. Monthly pickup is five to six days. I'm anticipating three days or so on a bi-weekly. So don't call us, we run the route, go through, pick everything up that meets the criteria. That's important part of us to meet the criteria. If it doesn't meet the criteria, then we put a tag on your door, be back in two weeks to pick up what we can, that now hopefully it's either bagged, if it's too small, larger items, pick up with a brush out.
And, and that was going to be my second question, the, the size criteria, because at one point we did pick up, probably shouldn't have, but picked up smaller stuff and so it's, the size criteria is going to remain the same?
Size criteria is going to be the same, two inches or larger, four feet or longer. Anything shorter than four feet, from adding feet and then you're now leaning into the hopper, one false move, you're one in with it.
Yeah.
So we want a four feet or longer, two inches around or bigger. Anything other than that goes in a yard waste bag or can, that yard waste.
Yeah, so those size requirements are purely safety requirements for us.
Be the same, roughly the same time period. So it'd be the, the April or May beginning, the start date, end in November, we do a couple of rounds for Christmas trees, basically a nine-month period.
Okay, thank you.
You good? Okay, we have to, do you have direction? Do we have to put this in a motion?
I would love a motion to direct staff to communicate the end of the yard waste bag tag program and the establishment of a bi-weekly brush cleanup program beginning April 1, 2025 and to make any necessary budget amendments.
I think.
I move what you just said.
Councilmember Hannon.
I'll second what you just.
Okay, there you go. Done. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number nine on tonight's regular agenda.
Discussion matter of receiving the Berkeley Days after action report and considering a resolution banning carnivals.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer.
Yes, I will start while Chief Kane and Lieutenant Hadfield come up to the podium. You know, as a, as a city manager, we get to have good conversations like we had tonight and then sometimes we have to present, you know, difficult recommendations, but informed recommendations based on the feedback from our professionals and the experiences that we've been faced with and those around the, well, around the region and the country. One thing I want to start with as we talk about this amazing tradition that we call Berkeley Days here, this is not, I just want to say it one more time, this is not a conversation about ending Berkeley Days. I know some of the, the coverage that's been out there, it maybe wasn't as clear as it could be, but this is not about ending Berkeley Days. That being said, what staff is in a position to do anytime we have an event or a public safety incident, we need to go back as professionals and review what happened, look at what could we have done differently, the trends that are taking place across the country, and we call that an after-action report. And so to walk us through kind of the thought processes that we've been through, Chief Kane and Lieutenant Hadfield are going to walk us through. The things that really stood out to me and why we're making this recommendation to ban carnivals is really two key things that stuck out in my mind and, and as I said, we'll hear more. But we had an incident on that Saturday night, May 11th, that required 41 public safety officials to be in our community to get a circumstance under control. That's going to cause a lot of stress on the community, a heck of a lot of stress on our public safety officers, strain on our mutual aid partners. And this is the second year in a row that something like this has happened. Number two is as a city manager, thinking about, you know, we have to think about worst-case scenarios, unfortunately. I had a hard time coming to grips with what would have happened if we had another incident in the community, what would have happened if we had a structure fire. These are the types of things that are going through my mind and our staff's mind as we're bringing forth a recommendation of this level. I would, lastly, I just want to close on, Chief Kane and I had a very good conversation with the Chair of the Berkeley Days Association, I believe is the title of the group. And we share the same priorities. We share the same concerns with the event and how this event moves forward. And I can't put words in their mouth because I'm not them and maybe Chief can confirm. To me, what I heard was relief, but a new excitement and energy around reimagining this event and what it could be so that we can continue with the 99th year and the 150th year and the 200th year of Berkeley Days. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Chief Kane and Lieutenant Hadfield who have worked on putting this summary report together for you all.
Thank you.
Just a little more context, last year, you recall, in 2023, we had some issues. We did an after-action report last year also, and I think a lot of you saw the videos, compilation we had. We put those, we put the recommendations into, into plan this year. So Berkeley Days Committee was absolutely fabulous, they hired a really good security company, we, we did, they did everything we asked them to. You know, we upped our game, we had more people initially and I think we really, we both gave our best effort to make this a safe event. I grew up in Berkeley, I went to Berkeley Days as a kid, I've taken my kids to Berkeley Days, I know Lieutenant, Lieutenant Hadfield the same way, so this is, this is tough for all of us. With, unless you have anything else, we'll just go right into the report.
I think he was at the first Berkeley Days. Respectfully. Yes, Lieutenant Hadfield, same thing as the chief, been a resident for a very long time and for 20 years, I don't think I've missed a Berkeley Days. And in all those years, it was mainly two to three officers. Bob North would be there, I'd be there as a rookie officer and someone else would tag along with us and maybe Sergeant Kelly was there as a youth officer. And that almost seemed to be too many sometimes, you were bumping into each other and any problems were very minimal. Last year, I've been the instant commander of Berkeley Days for probably the last seven years. In all of those incidents, haven't had any issues. So those issues obviously started last year where we got into considerable questioning of how that would look going toward this future. So we'll move through kind of what was going on. So just so council's aware of kind of what's going on. So you guys know how long Berkeley Days has been going on, that's been brought to you for a long time. We talked about what was going on in the previous years and I heard people say, oh, there's always fight at Berkeley Days. The, the fight that would happen at Berkeley Days would be two kids over a girl, it'd be a push or shove because someone cut in line, there may be a scuffle, they were quickly handled and everybody kept riding the rides. There was never any point where anything got past that in any time I've ever worked Berkeley Days. The biggest part has always been the parking, you know, having an event inside your community where people, a lot walk, I walk down the street to go to Berkeley Days. A lot of people that come in from a farther distance in Berkeley or from outside have to park. So that was always our biggest issue is trying to figure out where to put the cars. And like we discussed, there was always a very small detail that was needed. In 2023, the information was shared through other social media events. In talking with Berkeley Days Committee, it was nothing that they pushed out, it was just shared because it's public information. That year, around five o'clock, we started getting a lot of juveniles and juveniles to me, is anybody under the age of 18, would arrive and a lot of them wearing masks. Some of them were carrying duffel bags with that, some kids were found later with BB guns, a couple of fights started breaking out and, you know, not that you're not prepared for it, but you're like, this, this is different, this, this feels different, this hasn't happened before. And after a couple of the fights, it was, we need to get us under control before it gets dark, before we have bigger issues. And so that event was shut down. During the shutdown, there was a lot of problems with the traffic, trying to move police cars in and out, trying to stop the other fights that continued to happen. A lot of it inside the event was based on people who knew each other from the information we found out, they had a beef in school and they brought it to the carnival. After the event was more of just jumping some kid as you're running down the street. There was some retail fraud or thefts from stores that were open that occurred, not much damaged property other than trampled lawns that occurred for the most part. So obviously for 2024, we wanted to kind of improve on that plan. We did create, start working on the plan, I think by February, March, we were already making sure that we were ready for everything. There was a lot of discussions in regards to a security company and defense team coming in. They implemented no bags, if there was a bag for a mother, a diaper bag, that was checked. Anybody that brought something in was checked. At some point towards Saturday and we'll kind of go through the days themselves, there was a lot of kids that started to come up trying to sneak masks in and started seeing kind of the same patterns repeating itself. So we did have a plan for additional officers that day, like I said, we've normally had two to four at this event. At this point, we were at 12, ready to go initially. Everybody surrounding us was notified and on standby as well as additional officers that were already working the shift. We changed the parking routes, we changed emergency access, which was great for us, able to get people in and out of there, made people walk a little farther. But the plan was working and everything we had in place did appear great. For Thursday, everything I could find in our calls for service was two parking complaints. There was supposed to be a softball game, but rain kind of tampered down things. On Friday, another parking complaint, somebody got a ticket for that and threw it on the ground, so they got also charged with littering. And we did have a kid's bicycle stolen that they left unlocked. Saturday, one o'clock opening, everybody's there, we had the race in the morning. Around six o'clock, as it says on the board there, the crowds did start to increase. We got notified by the security company, hey, we got kids trying to get masks in here. We were watching kids come in the door, checking okay and immediately sneak into a corner to put a mask on. They were all confiscated, they were all removed from the premise. As much as it kept working with what was going on, we started getting the feeling that we had had in 2023. The groups were congregating, they were not riding rides, they were not riding, getting wristbands. And, and of course, we started pulling everybody together, we got the security company on board, started bringing the officers from the road in, feeling this was going to be another appearance of that. As we did that, of course, the first fight broke out. By the time we got to that location, there was no issue, at least that could be found. Another one did break, break out right in the middle, at that point it was terminated. We did not want any more injuries, anything going on. So the event was shut down. At that point, we had spoke with Berkeley Days Committee, they said, we're basically at capacity, we've kind of sold the ride tickets for the day, we didn't need to let anybody else in and started to push everybody out. That went very well when you were trying to send 1,500 to 2,000 people down side streets. It's not an easy thing to do. It did work very well compared to 2023. There were two fights, one an officer pulled up on and observed, one girl and another girl kind of interlocked with some friends, separated them real quick. And then there was another group as we were pushing the side streets out where one kid was, in short terms, jumped by five kids. Three of those kids were detained, they are juveniles, they were charged as juveniles for the assault and battery. After that incident, as the kids were being pushed out towards Coolidge and south towards 11 Mile for the majority of them, there were calls of kids fighting, we had lots of officers in the area, checked, nothing going on, can't find anybody. Sometimes you hear that outside your house, you think someone's fighting and it's really, you know, kind of the yelling, screaming of what was going on. Our plan had always been to move them to the main roads so that they were out of the residential area. Obviously, we do have to go two to three blocks in either direction to get them to that. Immediately, Lieutenant Korbanek, who's not here tonight, had the officers that were in those areas get the businesses to shut down. Previous years, we had kids going in and ransacking or looting things, had all those shut down. I remember seeing a report that there was a robbery at CVS, that never happened. I was at CVS within minutes of this being shut down, walked inside, everything was calm inside, I said, do you mind locking the doors just so we can kind of secure this area? Well, we found the biggest thing is when we got to 11 in Coolidge. Well, we found the biggest thing is when we got to 11 in Coolidge, I'm putting 50 or so kids, it may have been more, were now had pulled masks on. And the parking lot was filled with regular juveniles, but there were lots of them that had brought that with intent. They knew they couldn't get into the carnival with it. They kept them in their pockets. So now we had a big issue with kids running across 11 in Coolidge, going into Oak Park, coming back over. You'd see a skirmish behind an alley and officers trying to get that under control. And most of the kids had no way home. And that was probably one of the biggest problems was the unsupervised children that were there who had been dropped off by parents or friends and had no way. We had a 10-year-old that sat for almost two hours waiting for a parent from Sterling Heights to come get them. So those issues were kind of what I'm reporting to council of what happened. That's it, although it's a lot. I know there were a lot of rumors of other things happening. I just want to clear that up. We are not aware of a single thing outside of what I've told you in regards to the two fights and in regards to just a large group that ended up in the area of 11 Mile in Coolidge. By 10 o'clock, we, the park had been cleared since about nine. About 10 o'clock, almost every kid had been picked up. I know we had conversations with the city manager and all units were cleared by 11 o'clock that day. All of these pictures, pretty much other than the very bottom right corner, are things that were coming off public media from someone's either TikTok account, social media accounts. This young female in the bottom right corner was our only victim that we directly had with injuries. She had some blood coming off her face, which we've protected there. It's already been discussed that there were 16 public safety officers at 7 o'clock from our department, and that's excluding anybody that was already off. We did have the additional shift coming in to work the midnight shift. And, you know, the city manager's comment about 41 total officers that had responded, that's what we were able to get. And that's coming as far as, I think we had someone from West Bloomfield. We're coming down to help in taxing those cities and their resources as well for their own incidents. I won't say that I'm the numbers guy, but I know that's what we had come up with was the 13,000 just for public safety, just for Saturday to handle that incident. So obviously, there is a cost that comes into concern. One of the articles I had researched and I've heard was, you know, why didn't you just, you know, Arts Beats Needs doesn't have that problem. Arts Beats Needs has over $200,000 budget just for security, something I don't think that the Berkeley Days Committee has. Other things, just to make sure that the council's aware, and this is just this year. Birmingham shortly later had their fair, which had fights at their fair and had to be shut down on some of those nights, as well as Centerline, Oak Park Blast. I believe during the closing, did have some shots fired outside of their event. Marysville Fight, the Michigan State Fair Shooting, which I'm sure everyone in this room is aware of, which was very public. The St. Mary's Carnival, which had been going on for 120 years, has permanently closed as well due to those fights. Across the United States, carnivals have become a place where these are occurring. There are cities that are doing well without having those issues. Without speaking of them, I don't know what the difference is. Obviously, I don't want to say that everything is doom and gloom, that every carnival has those problems. There are some that go off okay. My big thing is being the instant commander and the one, obviously, the chief takes that full responsibility, but to plan these is what is that risk versus reward for the community? That's something that as council, you have to look into. My job is not directly to determine that. It's to provide the safety for whatever you guys determine that we're going to hold. So if there's an event, whether it's Berkeley Days or just a, you know, 5K run, we want to provide that safety for you guys, but something for you to consider. The proper staffing for an event and the financial impact, obviously, is something to consider with that. We can always reach out to other agencies and to the Sheriff's Department, but again, that just starts taxing different entities, you know, each weekend. The unsupervised youth, and that's in any event, if you go to a high school football game, we generally don't have any problems there, but is there potential for that? Of course there is. The city manager hit on that and I'm just reiterating that, that had something else happened, that would have been extremely taxing on us. And our priority is this community. It obviously taxed Oak Park at the same time. Who's dealing with the kids who had now come into their city? And that's a hard request for us to say that, hey, here's our problem. Can you help us out in an incident like that? Obviously, the nationwide things that are going on, we do have to always consider in anything that we set up for the parking. How are we going to disperse these crowds? That's our job is to figure those things out. And obviously, we want to prevent those issues to our businesses as well. You know, the residents are our lifeblood, but those businesses are important and they don't want damaged property. It's very expensive to replace a front window at Little Caesar's. So we want to make sure we avoid those things. So it is a quick summary of what happened, but that is the best I can give you for Berkeley Days. Comparing the two years, it went much better. The concern is always going to be what does 2025 look like? I know the chief has said forever that we cannot guarantee nothing will ever happen. Our job is to do the best we can to be prepared when it does happen. And if you have any questions for us, go ahead and ask, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If I could just add too, we know in 2023, there were guns there because a neighboring department stopped a car leaving that had guns in it. I guarantee you, there was guns there. I talked to the Novi Police Chief the day after their homicide and he described exactly the conditions we had. The difference we have is we're right in the middle of a neighborhood. Mostly other events have some place to disperse people. We don't. They go right to backyards. We had people climbing over fences and even down 11 in Coolidge. And for the record, I did call the Oak Park Public Safety Director at 10 o'clock at night and said, sorry. But the frustration of just, just watching this, this young girl next to me for hours was begging for a ride and couldn't get a ride home. And I will, I will mention too, we've really, the last couple of years, the action plan that is prepared in cooperation with public safety and emergency management, how many pages?
Hundred and nine.
Hundred, 109 pages. We pulled it out both times. Every department around us had a copy of it before both events the last two years. So it wasn't lack of planning. I think we did everything we could, but it's only a matter of time. I hate to say it, I, it's only a matter of time.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Just like I say, that we work closely with the Berkeley Days Committee and they were very responsive to set a little what happened. Berkeley Days Committee spent $18,000 plus on fencing and security. They had 12 security guards on site. So they worked with us real well. They did, did a really good job and they are totally disappointed about what happened and they want to move on with something that can be done the right way. So I want to give them a lot of credit for all the things that they did.
Okay, we need a little timeout.
Just very quickly, motion to suspend the rules to allow us to continue the conversation past their 10:00 PM kind of requirements.
Support.
Perfect. Motion made by Mayor Proton Gavin, support from Councilmember Baker. Okay, thank you both.
All in favor.
You have to do a vote.
Oh, all in favor. Yeah. Any opposed? I didn't think so. Okay, discussion from council.
Just to close this out, I was just going to say, again, just to be clear, this is not a dollars and cents thing. This is not a end Berkeley Days thing. This is a event that has outgrown our community from our standpoint. It's outgrown our public safety resources. It's outgrown probably the location of this. I'm not sure we have spaces here that are really designed to support a carnival and that's what this is about. And so we have put forth a resolution for your consideration with that, all of our staff here to support your discussion as you may request.
Thank you. So discussion from council. Councilmember Valani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you to our public safety, to Jack, emergency managers and everyone that was involved in the planning for the events for the past two years. Clearly, the efforts that you put in are what led it to not having a worse outcome. It might not have been the outcome we wanted, but certainly we were able to, or you were able to maintain the safety of everyone involved and it's super important. I think back when I, I've been in Berkeley a little over 10 years. We moved here when my daughter was four and going to Berkeley Days was a tradition we started when she was just a little peanut and we looked forward to it every year. And I think the scariest thing we had to worry was, did you eat the elephant ear before or after you went on the spinny rides? You know, those were the concerns that we had. She's going to turn 15 in a couple of weeks and sending her off this year to Berkeley Days as a parent and even as a council member, it made me leery despite knowing how much planning went into it. And I was fortunate she was there on Friday night and everything went fine, but then getting the calls and seeing what transpired on Saturday despite the very best efforts that were made to ensure that it would be a safe and smooth event for everybody. It was, everything was frustrating. We all felt that frustration and I do believe that it is time that we start looking at some of the other options there to have a Berkeley Days that truly does celebrate and gives our residents the celebration that we deserve in this community that isn't marred by some of these events. Because there's a lot of hard work that goes into it. Keeping in mind that Berkeley Days also raises a lot of money for some of our community groups and nonprofits. And when we shut down early and these things happen, it takes away from their ability to do that. So support this resolution here.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I echo my colleagues' sentiments of gratitude and appreciation for not only all the work that's gone into preparing the last two Berkeley Days, the events, the reactions and adjustments based on the events of the first year helped make the second year that much more safe. And to your point, minimized what could have been. The quick action and swift thinking on behalf of our response teams was commendable. The thoroughness of this report is also worth noting. We really appreciate the time and effort that it took to gather together all of the facts, everything based on evidence and interviews. So very grateful for the work that went into this. And then looking to the future, with my historical committee hat on, you know, as the, as the chief knows, it began as a parade back in 1926, celebrating the paving of Coolidge. So before it was even, before Berkeley was even a city, we had had a cause to celebrate. Back then, paving a road was a big deal. And so having Coolidge paved was, was the impetus for getting this started. And since it has become, being in May, the annual celebration of Berkeley becoming a city, which we will, which began in 1932. So looking to the future, I do think that, you know, perhaps revisiting the past might be a way to kind of see what worked before as a potential ideas for, for incorporating additional ways to engage with the residents in addition to having some destination at the end of a parade or whatever we choose to do. I think that'd be, that'd be really fun. And I too am sad that we're at the place where a midway carnival just isn't feasible, not only from a geographic and space perspective, you know, as the event grows, obviously, it's, it's popular, people come here, but also the logistical challenge, there's challenges that something like this brings are just becoming insurmountable. And then as we look at the trend of activities in neighboring communities, we see that it's not just Berkeley that's been targeted. It certainly is, it's all the rage now, I guess, to, to do these kinds of silly things. And so I too will support the resolution to begin a new chapter in how we celebrate our city and the amazing residents and businesses that we have here to the extent to which they can participate and create a, a new kind of magnet to bring people to enjoy Berkeley for perhaps the first time or return visitors so that they can continue to see what we have to offer here. So anyway, again, I'll close with gratitude and appreciation for all the work that's gone into the last several years, the quality of the report and the, the open-mindedness to think, to think different and reboot, you know, Berkeley Days 3.0, something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. As I was reading through the packet and just, you know, taking all this in, I spent some time also this past week with Mayor McClellan from Oak Park. And we were discussing their carnival and they too did all the things to be safe, right? Like the, the fencing, the security, all those things. And so she said it was a success. The, you know, fair itself was a success. There were no guns inside. And what happened was that the guns were just taken out into the neighborhoods. And so you, you do all this planning and preparing for an event that is very much community. It really is, is in the fabric of who we are as a city. I just think we're in a moment of reimagining Berkeley Days and I would love to hear, and I know it's, tonight's not the night for that, but I would love to hear from the Berkeley Days Committee on any ideas certainly that they've brainstormed. I know this is a huge disappointment for them. They work, they plan. They did all the things that they could do. And sometimes you just get to a moment where, okay, we have to recalibrate. We have to look at this differently. And I think we can have a successful event that reflects the pride in our community, the values of our community, the togetherness. I mean, I think Berkeley Days often signifies the beginning of summer for many people. It's a homecoming of sorts. People that grew up here but no longer live here come back and they see friends and families gather. And I think that we can still capture that spirit in a reimagined kind of way. What this is going to look like might be different, but I think that it's going to feel the same. It's going to be the Berkeley community event that we all know and love. So I support the resolution and I look forward to seeing what the future brings with regard to this. Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, it's sad, but I think this is the appropriate resolution for the appropriate time. I do hope this is only just a trend, a temporary trend, and it's, will pass its, will pass its course and in time, we can revisit this and maybe carnivals will be safe again to have and we can resume it. But for now, I think this is the appropriate step.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Yeah, this is, this is tough for me because like the, the warfighter in me wants to say like, like this is terrorism, you know what I'm saying? This is just people changing our way of life and like I want to say we should steel ourselves and keep doing what we're doing and not let them change us. And the reality, I think, is just, it's probably somewhere along the lines of airport security. You know, the TSA and all of the things that we changed in 9/11, we have to be, you know, realistic. And I think there are a lot of phenomenal people in this community that have done an amazing job in planning these events and, you know, man, it's, it's like, I want to say something so warrior-like and inspirational, like, you know, we need to fight this and not let, it, it, but I, the parent in me to Councilmember Valani's point, man, I sent my, I sent my, my three and I was just like, and as soon as something happened, man, I just, the, that feeling in me is just like, you know, it's not us. It's, you know, evident of, of, you know, what Chief and LT said, man, it's not, it's not us. It's everywhere, you know? So I think we need to figure out what's going on with our kids, you know? Young man that was killed in, at the State Fair was 14 years old. And if I'm understanding correctly, I think he was killed by a 14-year-old. So, you know, man, it's, it's, it's heartbreaking. And as much as I don't, I don't, my instincts are to just say, let's fight and not let them change our way of life. I think it's something that we have to do, so I will support this resolution.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Gavin.
Yeah, my colleague said it very well. You know, obviously, there's a lot of disappointment and sadness associated with this, but at its core, at its foundation, it's appropriate, it's prudent, it's measured. And so for those reasons too, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Geinzer, you have some direction now from council. Is there, do we have to make a motion on our 2124?
I think our preference, just so we're very clear on our direction, would be action on that. We're acting on this particular resolution. Again, this is not an action on Berkeley Days. As somber as, you know, these comments are that we definitely take to heart, I'm going to just try to go back to the positive in the conversation that the chief and I had on Thursday. The ideas that are floating around this committee already are like, oh yeah, the community's going to love that idea. And they're talking beyond just Berkeley Days too. Again, I don't want to put them up to something. I'd like them to be able to present their own, but they're thinking more events, not just in May, I guess I will say. So when we start working on this and we get through tonight, we will talk with Denise and everybody over there and perhaps at some point, we can try to figure out how we get them on a gen, an agenda to come and talk with council and kind of share some updates, whether it's a work session or what have you, so that they can engage with you all and gather some of your ideas here. With that, Chief, anything else you want? With that, Chief, anything else you want to add? Lieutenant Hadfield?
I just have one thing to add, and directly to Councilmember Black. That was the exact feeling I had on Saturday night. And I fought other counterparts, and I said, you have to be open on Sunday.
He's the reason we're open on Sunday, and I will tell you that.
I begged and pleaded, give me everything I can to give them a good, safe day, let these kids finish on a high note. I fully understand that, council. My heart absolutely wants us open. And if I could guarantee you, I would do everything in my power to make it happen. I do have to be realistic, but I fully just appreciate where you're coming from, because that's how I felt Saturday night, is I had to keep that open. And I think begged was, it might be the proper word for, 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 you know, we can do this, but obviously trends are continuing. So thank you again for that.
I seem to remember a conversation about you all coming to agreement on that. There is no public comment during this portion of the agenda. This is just a council discussion for this evening. So.
So on that note that I just wanted to just reiterate, I think that's why, to the point earlier, I think a couple of councilmembers talked about timing, we were able to finish out the event strong.
Yeah.
So we didn't end on a bad note. We ended on a high note. Sunday went really, really well. And so let's embrace that.
Yes.
And now move on to a new chapter.
Yes, sounds good. Okay, so moving forward. Ms. Mitchell, do you have to introduce? I guess I'm not sure how to proceed next. Do you introduce this, or is the motion?
To accept the resolution.
To accept the resolution. And I see, there are people that want to speak, and I-
There's not a motion on the floor yet, so.
Okay, so.
Make the motion.
Second. I will move to accept the resolution as written.
Thank you. With support from Councilmember Baker. Okay, now.
Now you may.
Public comment is open?
Greg DeRoz, for the record. I just urge you not to be hasty with the ordinance, because the council has approval authority for all these events. So I certainly favor a hiatus in the carnival as we go forward. Councilmember Henin mentioned about, actually, it may have been Baker, where have you mentioned about in the future, maybe we will be able to have an event 10 years down? Maybe 10 years from now, when we have, what, the second 100th anniversary? We'll want to have some kind of event. And you don't want to put an ordinance together that then prevents you from doing that, and you have to change an ordinance when you already have approval authority and you can limit this. Lieutenant Hadfield mentioned about football games, and that was my thought. Sadly, there could be a major violent event at a football game. It's happening. Are we going to empty the stands and refuse to allow any spectators at sport events? So those are the things that I urge you to think about, and why I say, don't be hasty in crafting the motion when you don't really need it right now, because you have that approval authority for all events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Luca, lifelong resident, with the exception of the past six years serving the United States Navy. I would just agree with the gentleman before me. The agenda says matter receiving the Berkeley Days after action report and concerning a resolution banning carnivals. It was stated more than five times, we will not be banning Berkeley Days. Berkeley Days is, according to the definition of a carnival, a carnival. So I would, you know, I would ask, what, if we're seeking to ban carnivals, according to the agenda here, but we're not seeking to ban Berkeley Days? I just, I would like some clarification on that. And then just tackle what the gentleman said before me. Hiatus, right? You guys have the ability to, you know, approve or deny these sorts of events. So, you know, it seems a bit extreme to just ban outright, right? Because you're going to have to come back if you want to have an event in the future when it might be more safe. You know, I respect and I appreciate the service of Berkeley Police Department, Berkeley Public Safety, and the recommendations and their after-action report. But like gentleman said before me, it's, there is a time, you know, and there's not a time. Maybe right now is not the time. But it doesn't mean we have to ban it permanently and have to come back at a later time, you know, to undo that ban. We can put it on hiatus for now if it's unsafe, you know? Maybe if the culture, you know, and the community gets in a better spot, we can come back and we approve it in future years. Recently had a, I've recently had a kid, I have young children, I know plenty of my neighbors do. You know, as many mentioned, this is a staple of Berkeley community. People love it. They do it every year. This is what they look forward to. You know, it's, I just think, you know, if you're going to ban a carnival, according to the agenda, we haven't heard like a definition on that. You know, I attended the VFW barbecue, sick, great time, you know, lots of good people. You know, if you look definition of carnival, that could be, you know, defined as a carnival. You know, so I would, I think we should visit this, you know, at a later time, not necessarily do a motion right now, but look at a clear definition of what we're trying to ban. And you guys said, you know, reimagining things, you know, what are we trying to reimagine it as? Maybe change the verbiage, get a little more concrete definition, just to not, you know, take such extreme actions right now to ban it. Like I said, maybe put on hiatus, give the community a chance in future years. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Hi, I'm Monique Luca. I also have lived in Berkeley my whole life, and I now raising my kids in Berkeley. I would just like to also reiterate on the fact of, I don't think that we should ban the carnival, I guess, is what you say. I think if you do decide on banning it, maybe it should be a two-year thing, not a forever thing that you have to go back and unban again. I think that maybe you could also think of looking at better protections. I mean, I know there were already really good ones, but maybe just Berkeley residents or a school ID check might help, I don't know. I just don't necessarily agree with the ban thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aubrey Roberts here again. As a grump who doesn't really go anywhere, do anything, what I'm about to say might be a little bit controversial, but hopefully I'll at least put myself a little bit, little bit clear. The thing about any carnival in general taking place in the Berkeley area, whether it's going to be Berkeley Days or not, I feel there's nothing that that particular carnival or any carnival in general can do that we can't also do in other ways. Like, we have like, you know, the cultural festivals that go on down 12 Mile. We have the art fest that goes down on Coolidge. And to say nothing of all the different other community events that like continue all around us in Berkeley, not in Berkeley, but all around Berkeley. Like, we just had the Dream Cruise, like, you know, an even more massive, more public event. And like, you know, that's always a risk, but like, you know, we managed to pull it through. Now, it's true that I feel the public that's spoken so far is correct in that like, we can't really jump the gun and like, you know, how we move forward, but it seems to me that council, professionals, and public have all been very clear-eyed about exactly like what they want, how they're prioritizing things, and at the very least, like, you know, what's important in this conversation. So I feel that Berkeley Days or like any carnival in the city would be a loss, but not a loss that we couldn't actually build something better from. Councilwoman mentioned our local organizations that would lose funding opportunities by the loss of Berkeley Days, but that in itself opens up more opportunities. So, yeah. Again, we have to wait on this, but I feel that there's like no shame and no harm in like, a little restraint in how we go about things. Because again, everything Berkeley Days can offer, or any carnival can offer, we can already procure. And again, even without it, that doesn't mean we have to go without anything that it also brought to us. So as tragic as it would be, I think we can think about like the opportunities. The word reimagining, I think that's a very good one. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mike McGinnis. So I think if your resolution spells out what, you know, what the definition means or what constitutes carnival, because if you think of the word festival, this resolution wouldn't stop festivals. Berkeley Days has, including in my childhood, felt like a festival or a celebration or a commemoration. So it's the carnival, I think might benefit the community if you're able to spell out what that means, because that is the specific aspect that you're talking about, based on what I'm understanding. And as the DDA director, I'm always thinking, okay, all of our events, is anything, you know, could it be technically construed as such? So might help the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, City of Berkeley. I'm with Gambino Protection. We are here to offer our services. I've been doing special events for 34 years. We specialize in this. We would like to help out as much as we can. Do not cancel this. You are right, we are not going to lose. This is terrorism. From the outside looking in, after 34 years of doing events, armed and unarmed, I see a lot of things that we could, we could change. And if you ask any of my coworkers, for weeks, we've been talking about this, and years, we've been talking about, hey, this is what they did wrong. This is, here, here's where the problem was. Novi was outside of the parking lot where the police aren't, so you got to have some security there. And other events. I've cleaned up Royal Oak Music Theater, I've cleaned up Electric Forest Festivals. I've been doing this for 34 years. We're military police and armed and unarmed specialists at this. We're not trying to step on any toes here. We're trying to compliment them and support them. So when the crowd is leaving, they can be out on the street, and we'll take care of the inside, because we know there's no weapons, because we screened everybody, we IDed. Under 18 is another huge problem. Like, no one, no one said, why is there people under 18 coming in? You guys said you sold more tickets than you needed, you didn't need to let no more people in? Well, that means you can now say, okay, without an adult, and the more people that you have, the more safety you're going to have. You're not losing money by hiring more of us. 10, I don't think was enough. I don't know what the security company's name was, but I'm sure if I find out, I could tell you some things that you won't like to hear about them. We've been doing this for a long time. 34 years I've been doing this. I specialize in proactive, seeing things before they happen, spotting them, de-escalating, that's my specialty. It's not how tough I am or how big my gun is, it's how I talk and see people and communicate with them and treat them with a smile, so there's nothing going on. If they're happy, there's no fights. So I hope that Gambino Protection, we can talk more and go from here and work more. We came to hear what your guys' problem was and just open the dialogue to us talking to you more. My boss, Kristen Gambino, you will love to talk to her, I promise you that. Thank you, everybody.
Hi there. Jennifer Hans, I've been a nearly lifelong resident of Berkeley as well. Berkeley Days was one of the first places I was allowed to go as a teen, kind of unsupervised myself, and it was very different, I think, in the 90s. I went in 2023, I brought my kids, and we left a little early because the vibe changed. I don't know how else to explain it. We just started seeing, things just seemed a little more shifty, there was like little squabbles, and I said, all right, let's head home. We left, and it was only about maybe within an hour after we had left that we started to hear sirens, we started to hear commotion on, see it on Facebook, that things had really started to go awry. We opted not to go in 2024. Since we moved back here in 2016, that was the first year that we had decided not to go. I didn't want to risk it, I didn't want to feel that same vibe change again, and I just said, let's just stay in, we'll just, it's Mother's Day weekend. Anyway, let's just find something else to do. I love the idea of reimagining Berkeley Days into something that really celebrates who we are. It doesn't have to be a Midway Carnival, I would still love an elephant here, but, you know, there's definitely other ways that we can celebrate how amazing Berkeley is as a community without opening ourselves up to having to have military police on-site. I don't want to have to have my bags screened and ID checked and a security perimeter around for us to be able to have a good time in our community. I think we have so many other events that we already do and do well, and I think this just opens up a nice May weekend for us to try to explore a new way to celebrate the future of Berkeley. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Any other public comment? Okay, closing public comments? Any further discussion from council? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, and I did have a note for when we get later, but for when we get into the ordinance crafting part, that we do need to very specifically define what a carnival is. And I think part of what we need to look at is the other carnivals that have had issues, what are the commonalities? What, what is it that is attracting the bad actors? And those are specifically the things that we want to prohibit.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, just a couple of closing thoughts. So I'm not going to go point for point of everything we've heard, but I think what's important, as we've talked about this, and maybe it's a nuance, and I'm not a local, and I'm a temporary person, but from the, from my experience working here, Berkeley Days is not a carnival. A carnival has been made part of Berkeley Days. And so I do agree that we need to have a definition, and we do have a definition in our new zoning ordinance that we are going to be looking at this further. But to Director McGinnis's point, we're not talking anything about festivals, dances, whatever there happens to be. I think one of the key words that we'll talk with the Director Kapilansky is about, that's been said a couple of times tonight, but that term midway is something that we may want to look at there. There were some comments about onerous, you know, undoing. There is no onerous undoing here. I mean, that was my word, somebody else used different words, but this is a resolution. What you're going to put in place is not going to be in an ordinance, the definition of carnival will be in an ordinance, but this is a resolution that we will further spell out as we go to update our community special event policy, which is a whole nother discussion that is coming. The reason it is important to communicate this is so that Berkeley Days knows what to expect, and any other potential event organizer knows what to expect. Should we get to a point, three years, five years, 20 years, whatever, it's a matter of a council changing a resolution. With that being said, any other questions? We're happy to try to help address them as necessary.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R 2124.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, we are now at the communications portion of our meeting. Who goes first?
Councilmember Baker.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'd first like to thank, thank again all of the folks that came out to speak on either the, on any of the issues that have come before us tonight. The citizen comments portion early on was very insightful and helpful to provide guidance. And then the feedback and comments that we've received throughout the meeting continue to be very, very enlightening and appreciated. As mentioned, I'll kind of summarize some of the DDA stuff, since we have had a wonderful assortment of items on the, on the main agenda. DDA met last Wednesday morning, and they talked about some strategies for capital improvements on Coolidge. The striping on Coolidge has been completed, other than some signage just north of 12 Mile, which will be installed as soon as it comes in, ideally late next week or so. Again, congratulations on our sixth anniversary awarding of the National Main Street Community. That is a tremendous accomplishment. And as mentioned, Boukley Month is coming up here, beginning with the skeleton decorating underway. You could go to bouklymish.com or downtownboukly.com, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that one more time.
We know.
How many O's are in that web?
Yes. Or you could go to downtownberkeley.com and get that going as well. Historical Committee meets tomorrow evening. We're exciting, we're excited about the Kit Home Tour that's coming up, as was mentioned at the onset, Saturday, the 28th of September, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tickets are available at Berkeley Chamber. And then again, as mentioned, the museum hours are slightly expanding in addition to Sundays and Wednesdays, the second Thursdays of every month will be available. And for more information on that, you can go to berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, Patrick Lassione once said, "The best way to help yourself and your community is by becoming an active volunteer." And one of the ways, we've, we've celebrated so much about the volunteers that make this city a success and make each event thrilling. We too on council, in addition to our roles here before- We too on council, in addition to our roles here before you, a volunteer to help advance the causes of our, of our community, and like-minded folks across the state. And one of that is active participation in the Michigan Municipal League. Most of us, I think all of us, were at the MML Annual Convention last week, representing the city, bringing back all sorts of cool information that I don't have time to talk about, like how we're going to use AI to help with our operations. And it's with great pleasure, you know, having served as a member of the Board of Trustees, a two-time member of the Elected Officials Academy Board, and recipient of the Jim Sinclair Exceptional Service Award, I'm really happy to announce that we have some additional advancements here amongst our council. Mayor Dean was elected to the Mayor Association, the Michigan Association of Mayors, which is the nonpartisan organization of Michigan's chief elected officials that represent over 100 communities across the state. And also, congratulations to Councilmember Henan. He was elected to serve on the Board of Trustees, and I know that you're in for a, a great experience doing that. It's a terrific organization, and that function is crucial to helping advance the state's causes. And he was also elected president of the Elected Officials Academy, having served on that board already. And so, his focus on that will help continue. The purpose of Elected Officials Academy is to help folks like us get better and smarter at the things that we can do to help make our communities great. So, there are some folks across the state, and even here in the city, that have little to no municipal experience coming into office. The EOA, as it's called, provides courses and structure and training to help us do an even better job advancing the city's causes. So, with that, I just want to again thank everyone, and please be sure to hug somebody. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Thank you, yes. Well, we started tonight talking about guns, and ended tonight essentially talking about guns. And there's very little at the local level we can do, but one thing I think we, the one thing I think we can do is, as much as possible, fast-track our firearms retail ordinance. You know, there's requirement steps we have to go through at, even at our local level, has to start at the Planning Commission. We have to have notification, you know, 14 days before any ordinance changes. So, you know, we're, don't even make the deadline for their next meeting, but I would like to see us as, you know, even faster than the zoning ordinance we're already doing. At least, the things we discussed tonight, do that, get that through as quickly as we can. For the Tree Board, their summer hiatus is over, and they will have their next meeting on Monday, September 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals, at their August meeting, they heard two cases and approved additions for two residential dwellings, and had no cases in September, but have three cases coming up next Monday, October, or September 14th, where they'll have, no, they'll have in October 14th, they will have three cases that'll be heard. And then, yes, we all were able to attend the MML, you know, in his convention this year. It was great to be able to connect with other communities, network, learn from them. I found all the keynote note speakers inspirational and, you know, informative. But the one session that I wanted to share with, I, we got to, went to a deeper dive into developing thriving communities. And the MML staff are working on some tools to help, to help communities thrive and do better. And I'm staying in touch with the staff there, and hope to bring some of that here to us, to help us to continue to improve our development efforts. I think there's some really exciting things going on there. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Committee on Technology and Engagement will be meeting on Wednesday, 18 September, in the Public Safety Conference Room. It's our second meeting. Unfortunately, I won't be there because of a prior commitment, but we are very excited to continue to see what this merger of CEAC and TAC is, is going to be. So, very excited about that. I just want to say, as a proud gun owner, on behalf of gun owners, that no one wants more common sense regulation and rules than gun owners. As it pertains to Berkeley Days, what, what breaks my heart is, man, these are kids. I'm an active-duty member of our military. I, I literally spend my days trying to figure out how can we can get America's enemies off this planet. I don't, a 14-year-old with a gun. With all due respect to the security company, and you spoke, and I agree with a lot of what you're saying, bad men is different from babies. Babies. I can't have you out there policing babies. So, I just want to say, all of us, all of us, need to invest in our, in our kids. All of us need to invest in our kids. That's, that's, that's the takeaway. So, take that with you home, and let's figure out how we can, can do something so that our babies don't want to put guns in their hands.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, this Friday morning, on the 20th, at 8:30 a.m. at Woodward Corners, will be their monthly Chamber Chat. So, it's a great way to get to know other local businesses. There's no registration required, you can just show up. As was mentioned in the comments at the start of session, the Kit Home Tour is coming up on September 28th, from 10 to 4 p.m. It's a really great cha- or a chance to tour some unique homes that are part of Berkeley's history. They are still looking for some volunteers, and if you volunteer for part of the day, you get a free ticket to go see homes the rest of the day. So, if you're interested, you can reach out to the Berkeley Chamber for more information on that. Save the date for October 23rd, more details to come, but the State of the City is coming up. So, get ready, plan your outfits, and get ready to hear lots of great information about our city. From the Environmental Advisory Committee, the next meeting is this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. All are welcome to come. I would like to send a big congratulations to our high school sports teams. There is apparently magic in the new turf that was put down at Hurley Field, because both the boys varsity soccer and our varsity football team collected a big old W this past weekend at the grand opening of the field. So, it was very exciting if you were able to attend either of those games. Last but last least, as always, I know there are many people watching, not as many people in the room now, but thank you, as many of my other councilmembers have shared. Thank you for all of those who have come to share their opinions on a lot of topics tonight, but always those who have also written in. With that, November is a big election, regardless of what side of the ticket you would like to vote for. It is so important if you get out there and vote. Suburban voters, specifically suburban women voters, have some of the highest apathy rates around. So, whatever you felt about today's topics, make sure that you are taking time to get to know candidates up and down the ticket that represent the values that you believe in, and get out there and use your rights to vote. Ms. Mitchell has done an incredible job working to ensure that we have safe and accessible voting here in Berkeley. You have nine days of in-person voting leading up to the election. You can register to vote the day of the election. So, you have zero excuses to not get out there and use your voice. It is your civic duty and responsibility. Please get out there and vote.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quickly, Parks and Rec will meet October 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. The Library Board will be meeting this Wednesday, the 18th, at 6:30 p.m. And very briefly, just like to echo comments that my colleagues have made on, on various topics tonight. Really appreciated the chance to be at MML, to learn best practices and networks, network with other electeds, and to best continue to improve our communities. And of course, a big congratulations to both the mayor and Councilmember Henan on their hard work and achievement as recognized municipal leaders. So, and then lastly, just another congratulations to Director McGinnis on reaccreditation as a National Main Street Community. A lot of hard work, a lot of effort and love going to what you do, and of course, what the county does generally with Main Street. And so, we're just very appreciative of that effort. So, thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Geinser?
Is it really my turn already?
It is your turn.
Um, I'll be brief, but to the question that came up earlier, I was going to share it anyway, but there'll be a press release going out tomorrow regarding the city manager's search. I'm not stealing anything from you, am I?
You're not.
Okay. So, the council has selected their finalists. They've been invited, they've accepted. Those names will be released as part of a press release tomorrow. The main point for the public's interest is from 5:00 to 6:00, there will be, we're going to call it, as long as it all comes together, we're going to call it A Little Taste of Berkeley. And it's going to be in the Public Safety Garage, where members of the public will have an opportunity to come and mingle with the candidates. I believe in talking with James, the train will handling the search. There'll be some comment cards and such that you'll be able to participate in. But it's a great opportunity to introduce yourself to these candidates, and welcome them to the community, thank them for their interest, and give them a little bit of a hard time, too, maybe. But just for council's benefit, we've been working with James to give him all the support he needs to run a good process. The candidates will be toured around the community, have some opportunities to engage with staff prior to the open house, and then you will have your interviews, I believe, starting at 6:00 here in city council chambers.
Thank you.
Would you mind reiterating the date again, just so folks can mark their calendars?
October 1st, which is, I don't even know what day of the week that is.
The Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, a Tuesday. And thanks for the heads up on the State of the City. We're going to have to talk at our staff meeting tomorrow about how we coordinate outfits, so we'll figure that out.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No report tonight.
Okay. Happy birthday to Mary Mariegeon Schmidt, our oldest Berkeley resident. Aunt Mary, as she is affectionately known, turned 108 on September 4th. Yeah, it's a big deal. The DCFC Youth South Oakland Boys 2008 Rogue Team are national president's cup champions. This is quite an accomplishment. These young men worked hard. They had two games that went into overtime that they won, and two shootout games that they also won. So, congratulations to the team and Coach Dougie. I just have a little blip about MML. I really enjoy and appreciate every year the opportunities that we are able to go to MML, because it gives all of us an opportunity to be in a setting where learning is the focus, we get to talk with other elected officials, and then also the nice part of that is that sometimes you don't even need a lot of words, because we know, we know the situations, we know the, the triumphs, the challenges, all of those things. I moderated a session entitled Equitable Small Business Ecosystems: Tangible Ways to Support Your Business Community, which was not only interesting, but I learned just by listening to this. Berkeley's already doing many of the things that were suggested. So, thank you, Ms. Kapilansky and your department, for being proactive, and to Mr. McGinnis for attracting new business and, you know, working with businesses that are thinking about coming into Berkeley. We really appreciate all that, that you've done. So, October is Berkeley Cares Month, and to kick that off, we are having a Pancake Breakfast at Berkeley First, benefiting the Berkeley Cares Community Food Pantry. Many people don't even know we have a food pantry in Berkeley, but we do. And in order to, we want to raise awareness and raise money for the food pantry. The breakfast will be in the social hall in the lower level of the church from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Pancakes, juice, bacon, coffee will be served. A minimum donation of $15 per adult and $10 per child 10 and under is being asked for. You may make your donation on the food pantry website, which is berkeleycaresfoodpantry.com. The pantry accepts PayPal, so if you choose to go that route, please put Pancake Breakfast in the notes section, and how many adults or child plates you're paying for. And you may also just show up on the day of, that's Saturday, October the 5th, and pay cash. This is a council-initiated effort. As many of us who are able to be there that day will be there, setting up, cleaning up, cooking, serving. But it really is to raise awareness and funds. The pantry is, they, they just do so much good, not only in Berkeley, but in the surrounding community. So, if you are free that morning and are having a hankering for pancakes, we would love to see you. And that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, September 16th, 2024 meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.